Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this city council meeting. This is Monday, September the fourteenth, 2020, at seven oh one P M. Ms. Terry, would you call real quick?
Thanks, Terry. Ralph Powell is absent. Ms. Terry is absent, but he said he's going to be able to light and dinner.
Here.
I see Brown is absent. Well, Peter?
Here.
And we have a forum with David Schmidt.
Thank you. If you would please stand at this time, we begin our meeting this evening with a prayer led by the new manager of the First Baptist Church of Calhoun, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Chief Dawson.
Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for who you are to us. We are grateful for your grace on us, grateful for your grace on the city through these times that we have had some decisions that need to be made, the things that are happening in the world around us, and I am thankful for the leadership of the city. Pray to continue to bless them with your grace. Tonight, if you will give them your discernment in decision making and the conversations that will be had, it will be honoring to you. Pray this all in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, committee of citizens. For now, I'm not sure what you did. Every time, and you pray every time. At this time, I would ask the council to triple or the minutes of the August third, 2020 regular council meeting.
I want to take that out of the air.
And motion in a second.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Eric Wilson?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is recognitions and acknowledgements. I recognize everyone, I think. It's not what that's for, but I thought it'd be cute. And acknowledge your being here. Thank you for coming tonight. And again, as you can tell, we're doing things a little bit different during this COVID period, so appreciate you coming. If others show up, Danielle can make sure they have seating back there or somebody ready or somebody to help them. Appreciate it. Great, so I'm here. There he is. All right. Thank you. Committee reports. Most of them are in your packet, I believe. I think there were a few that came in late this afternoon. Especially Kenny was a real star. I did talk about Kenny earlier this week, and I think he sent his hand. I haven't seen his foot back in it, but S R C A, Parks Commission, if anybody's here from the Parks Commission, Water and Fish Water Commission, Mr. Bailey is here. Everybody? Is there any questions about the reports you have, or is there something missing? Sure, as I always say, let me know or Danielle know. Get those questions answered before you put them down. John, did you have anything you wanted to report on at this time?
They can read it or I can give it to them verbally.
Okay.
Their choice.
The council gives what you have in your packet. Okay, good. Moving on to citizen forum. I did not. Danielle, would you grab that for me? I'm sorry. Greg, thank you. He's got it. Nobody signed it? Okay. Thank you. For those that are new to the meeting, if you ever want to speak to council, we do have a citizen forum sheet at the back at the entry to sign up for. And if you didn't get a chance to do that, if you want to speak tonight, it's your first time, I certainly would acknowledge that when you let you speak at this time.
You can be doing that.
I don't know. He's on the agenda, Mr.? You're on the agenda? Yes, sir. We're talking about you. Come on in. It's all good. Greg, was he signing up to speak? Okay. Hold on for just a second. You might have a song or a joke going with you. It's awful quiet. Did you want to address the council tonight, sir?
I should, yeah.
If you'd like to, just if you would, just we have your last five minutes, and if you come to the mic, you can do it now.
I'm addressing the, just based on the item number four on the agenda.
Okay.
I'll call it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Greg gave you two signals back there. Was there somebody else, or do you? I guess not. He disappeared now. Well, we'll come back if somebody does. Okay. Did you have someone else? Oh, okay.
I need to get there to sign it.
They did. Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm not sure. Greg, Mr. Stacks, is that it? Okay, we're going to go ahead with Sunny and then Mr. John. Jim Anson, I just met you a little ago. Did you want to speak this evening?
Who, me?
Yes, sir.
Just a guest watching what's going on.
Okay.
I just moved here a year ago and
Yes, sir.
Bought a house here and wanted to see how the city council does.
Okay.
I guess my friend Don Oliver left, and now I've got to start with the new guy to try and do some things on the house.
Okay. All right.
Just trying to get to know people.
Very good. We appreciate you coming tonight. I met you at the back earlier. I didn't see him, I'm sure he has something else. And he's a mechanic. You should tell that.
Retired.
Retired, okay.
Or I should say tired.
Tired, yes. All right. Moving on, then we'll get to the financial report. Mr. Marsh.
See that? All right, first, I'm going to start by letting you know that the legislative audit has begun. It started about a month ago. We're well into it, well underway. One of the slowdowns this year is the fact that they're doing it all off-site, so we're having to send documents electronically, and they have to pick them up. And it causes a little bit of a delay in getting the audit performed. But we're looking at probably another month of them looking at our documents and addressing some of the potential concerns that they may have or that we may have. 2019 water sewer audit has also begun. It started a week ago, and they're looking at the 2019 records. We're in the process of getting them. We had to retrieve some of the records from the legislative audit. We had to bring them back because now we have to turn them over to the water sewer. So it's kind of a little bit of a shuffle game that we're doing right now with the audit. So that is underway. Another thing that we just started was the budget season. Today, all the directors got their budget worksheets electronically, and they're in the process of trying to get us some information, so the budget season is upon us. City Council will be looking at doing some budget study sessions scheduling next month at the October meeting, and we'll be looking at actually performing the reviews hopefully in mid-November. So it is something to keep on your radar for scheduling purposes. As far as the city agreeing with fiscal impact under COVID, how we are doing, I'm going to share with you the information that you do have in your financial package. I believe that is on your computers or on your tablets. But if you haven't noticed, we are still trending very positive in both cumulative and for the month over the same year month. If you look at the numbers, you'll see over If you look over at the 2020 cumulative, which is for all of the first eight months of the year, we're 15.5% ahead of where we were last year at this same time. Last year, we were only 1.8%. 2019 cumulative is tracking at 1.8. 2020 is 15.5. It's a significant increase that we have. So when you look at our projections for September, October, November, December, remember, we shifted this projection from what would it be worst-case scenario to break even on our budget at zero growth. We've actually calculated now, or I've actually calculated, what it would take for us for the next four months on average, we could lose an average of 20% and still achieve a three and a half percent growth, which is what we were tracking year to year to year for the last five years, was about a three and a half percent increase or growth in our city sales and use tax. I realistically do not expect us to be anywhere near this. I think our growth will exceed three and a half percent. That's just my projection that I'm looking for. Based on getting the information from Stevens Group, I get the economic reviews every Monday, and they tell me a lot about what's going on, both in the state and the nation, and I'm basing a lot of my prognostication crystal ball on that. So you'll be seeing, hopefully, this, these numbers, this three and a half percent tracking a little bit higher. Realistically, I'm hoping for about a seven to nine percent if we see some degradation in our numbers over the next couple of months. I'm actually looking for a very positive impact year for city sales and use tax. As far as, so you'll notice that the green line here is what we're actually doing this year. Normally, there is in the black, it was what we did last year. So you know, the trend goes down in the months of July and August, which is really the June collection. So by looking at how we're tracking, we're tracking in the same form. The purple line that you see here is what we are on an average for the year cumulative. The blue line is what we budgeted. So we're enormously ahead of where we were last year at this time. Again, this is where we would have to track in order to still make a three and a half percent budget. That's way below where we were last year at this time, and I don't necessarily see that happening. As far as the county sales tax is concerned, you'll notice a big jump in the county sales taxes well for the collections that were received in the month of August now for June. And when you look at the actual numbers, last year, 2019, we were at 0.8% cumulative. That's for the eight-month period. This year, we're tracking at 4.3% right now cumulative, year over year for the first eight months. If you were to apply the same logic in the county sales tax, we're saying, what would it take for us as far as a reduction in our collections for county sales tax in order to make our budget? In other words, no growth, break even, no growth at all. Usually, we run about a one, one and a half, almost two percent sometimes growth in our county sales tax. It would take an eight percent average reduction for the next four months for us to break even on our budget. And I don't necessarily see that either. I think there will be a growth for the county sales tax as well. Usually, that's a prognostication made on what I see other cities also collecting in their county sales tax. So those numbers are very robust and very good. As far as our advertising and promotion tax collections, this is a more real-time view of what the city's doing. This is our prepared food tax. These are actual collections. What you see in red is this year, and you see the blue line is what we were doing in previous year, and the green line is our budget. So you'll see that we're tracking higher, and it is considerably higher than what we thought it was going to be, given the, no one knew what was going to happen during the COVID shutdown of restaurants. Apparently, our restaurants here adapted very well. They were able to overcome. You'll see, we are tracking the pre-COVID and the during-the-COVID period, what the sales are doing, what our prepared food is on a representative sample basis. And on that representative sample basis, you see that there was an uptick in the month of July, collections that we received in August. And for this representative sample, you're seeing a 9.82% in this A and P, the advertisement promotion tax for the prepared food. And that's actually very good, because what that parlay's into is about a 790 or three-quarters of a million dollar increase over the five months that COVID was involved. That's the increase in actual what we projected representative sample sales to be by those 12 or 13, actually 13 entities. So they're fair and fairly well, the prepared food, the A and P is. Now, we don't have hospitality here, so we're not in a tourism situation, as everybody knows. So our people in Greenwood are obviously supporting our local restaurants, which is very good. And then when I also gave you, you have the full financials in there, but I wanted to point out, this is the comparison of actual to budget by departments, so you get a good look right now as to where we're tracking surplus or deficit-wise against our budget. Now, there's reasons for some of the reviews to be, some of the areas to be below or a deficit spend right now, and that's because expenses don't budget exactly month to month. What the revenue streams are, revenue streams seem to be a little not controllable, too, to the extent that you don't get the same amount every month. There's highs and lows and peaks and valleys in it. But for instance, the street department here has a street operating. They have a city sales and use tax restricted and a sidewalk operating account that they are maintaining. The street overall is 29.19% surplus or above budget right now for their revenues collected at 68.71% of our budget, and they only have about right at 39 and a half, almost 20% of their expenses spent of their budget. And the reason for that is we stopped a lot of the not necessary critical infrastructure spend during the time when we didn't know what the COVID was going to do. So they're right now tracking very well, almost 30% surplus. For the general and operating fund departments, that's the general and admin, that's the mayor's office and finance, the parks operating, police operating, planning, animal control and fire all make up the departments under general. The general fund right now is almost 5% surplus. We do have two departments that are not tracking at a surplus right now. Parks right now is really a break even. They're at 0.32% deficit spend. They were supposed to have a surplus of 632 on their budget. They're right now at a $808 deficit. That's, we're watching that, but that's not something that I'm as concerned about. Primarily, the biggest factor in the parks operating is the parks pavilion revenue, which is down about 60% because of the canceled events. So that's, that's one of the reasons for that. We are seeing an uptick now in the bookings for future rentals, so the amount seems to be recovering in the pavilion. The police operating is 3.26. The general and admin's 3.27% surplus. The animal controls at 24 and a half percent, 24.9, almost 25%. Fire department's at almost 17%. So that makes up the general and operating, general and admin rather, department still running at a surplus for the city. On the next page, you see all the city sales and use tax accounts. You see city sales and use tax fires. These are restricted monies. This is adjusted, the city sales and use tax parks is adjusted for the grant settlement that we have with the engineering firm. So that number's a little different than what you see in the actual financials right now. The city sales and use type street and water sewer, when you add all those up, we're about running about almost 53% ahead of budget. The A and P operating is running right now. This is the collections against what we budgeted, 26.35% ahead. The sewer departments who are operating, running about 26.73 collection of their revenues and 26.94 on their expenses. They're right now at a deficit of 0.21, which is pretty much break even. And then the water department right now for the first eight months is running at about a 4.4% deficit. A lot of that has to do with the revenue stream and where they spend their capital monies. They're starting to spend that capital money right now, and that's ahead of still four months worth of city sales and use tax to come in and our revenues for water systems. So both of these affect the water department. There is a transfer that we do from the city sales and use tax restricted water sewer to certain expense items on the water department. The amounts that you see in the revenues for both water and sewer have already been adjusted by city sales and use tax transfers. So up to this point. But any spend that's going on right now, or the spend that was done in August, is still yet to be funded. So that, we could wipe out that right there with the transfer that's approved from city sales and use tax down to the water department. Just so you know, the total city, all departments, all revenue streams, total budget, the city's running 9.79% ahead of budget right now. 9.79%. And that's very favorable from the city's perspective. A lot of that had to do, again, with the fact that we were budgeting to be somewhat aggressive in certain departments, spending for capital, spending for improvements. Those were curtailed to see what was happening with COVID. Now that we see that our revenue streams are strong, they're starting to spend that money now. So 9.79% is a good position to go into against budget for the rest of the year, for the whole month. And that's the basic financials in a nutshell.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Tom? I don't get to do this very often. Tom does a wonderful job, as you know. The friendly and generous reception and entertainment of guests, visitors, or strangers, that is the definition of hospitality, of which Tom said we don't have any. So beg to differ.
True.
We don't get taxes for it, right?
If I didn't set you up somehow.
That's right. I wouldn't have anything.
You wouldn't have anything.
And thank you for laughing to it. Thank you very much.
That's all you got?
That's it. That's it. I've seen the numbers. They're good. They're always good. Thank you. As you can see, we already have a lengthy agenda. So in that tradition, this morning when I had the department at B, we tried to bump that up to 20 if we could. We didn't quite make it, but we did go to 15. So if you would, if the council will allow, we need to add a number 14, which is a attractive relief bond update. And a number 15 approval, council's approval of auction list. I'm not sure how you have officially on it. Okay? So that being said, we'll try to get through these as quick as possible, but yet do them all justice.
Do we need to put 16 over there for the lawsuit?
Yes, sir, we do. I knew we could get closer to 20. 16, and you're going to report on that, I guess, right? Okay. We'll just call that lawsuit. Just reading, right?
Correct.
Till then? Okay. Anybody else? Counsel, anybody? Okay, we'll move on. Old Business, number one.
I'm not there, 16.
Oh, we want to keep you. We want to keep you to the end of the meetings.
Right next.
It's fine. Number one is Old Business, actually, amend ordinance number 18 dash 03 regulating the operation of mobile food vendors, and this is our first reading on this. Any questions and or discussion regarding this ordinance? Or the amendment? We need to familiarize everybody, kind of remember what we did here.
Nothing changed since last time.
No, absolutely nothing from the last time.
We make a motion, we place it on its third reading by Title I.
Second.
And a motion in just a few seconds. Placing on first reading or third reading by Title I. Greg.
Mr. Vice Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 18 dash 03 regulating the operation of mobile food vendors, like mobile vendors, concession regulators, and city rules are required permit and requirements.
Okay, thank you. Did we duly notice or the whole council here now? Did we need to do?
Ralph Powell.
I'm sorry.
I did know.
You did, but I Okay. Number two actually has been removed, or we need to ask that. Is that the one you're?
Oh, new business?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So with counsel, if you want to address that.
Yeah, the item number two was the ordinance providing the authority for code enforcement building official to write citations. And we found that in 06, ordinance number 0615, we already have an ordinance in place for that that does everything that we need to do, so I would like to withdraw the code ordinance.
We need to go to that.
Well, I would note that I visited with Sunny for 30, 25 minutes the other day. I think that he's ready to go write some citations.
I am, but we're getting closer.
Will help him. Will. Just going down the track, I think, and so forth. But I wasn't real clear on that, so he probably, he'll write the citation.
And I have to admit to opening that packet, it came in, I knew it was a packet of citations. I wanted to see them, so I opened it.
Yeah, the problem is that I've got some of the things that we need to do, and it calls for five-part citation, these are two. It says to, you know, to log them in and things like that, so I'm still not real clear on what we're going to do. I don't know if we can write a citation and the person comes to the city hall to pay for it as opposed to, you know, where they would pay for that. So like I said, we're getting closer, but there's still some
I think the court clerk will pay him a lot of that.
Well, I said, the sheet that I got from Christian said it had to be a five-part, take it, are yours five-part?
Are.
Say the one, because they said it's for code enforcement. Code enforcement is only two-part, so it's a different type of citation.
That's a little longer. Let me look at it. I'll visit with the judge and see.
She does, the understanding is that the citation, they'll go to the court.
That's correct. That's right. They don't fix it, they fix it their time. That's a little bit bigger in setting than sending for five letters like we had it. And it's a lot less costly to the city than condemning it or doing other improvements to the property. I think it's a good thing. I think Mr. Bill's got a good grasp on it, and I think with he and chief and I, we can probably figure it out.
We're getting closer anyway.
Yeah.
What ordinance was that, Mr.?
The ordinance that is in effect, AC is 0615.
14 years old.
Yeah, but it covers everything that
Just that, why?
It covered everything that we were trying to do. And said, our new inspector was looking for another ordinance and ran across this, and he said, aren't you trying to do something for the citations? And he handed to me, and I said, this is it.
Just five years old, right? 15, 20, 15.
So if this is any indication how lengthy this meeting will be, because we just removed that, but yet we had a good discussion, which is good. We just don't have the ordinance, right? You're not prepared to
You are.
You're not, just not prepared to have the ordinance tonight, right?
Not the
I'm not to have, but it's it, okay. But you just need to get more.
We just want to
Got you.
Get rid of that.
Okay. All right. So we're moving on to number three?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
New business number three is rezone property located at six twelve East Knoxville from R one to R five for the purpose of the construction of This is the second reading.
First reading, right?
Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. Yes, first reading. This is a large lot that's on Knoxville. We tabled it for one month, tabled two months until we got the property maintained. The grass is growing pretty high, and I told the owner of the property that we would not discuss the rezoning until he took care of his property.
So that's the vacant lot, one lot over. The house on the corner stays.
There's a house on the corner, and then this vacant lot.
Right behind Moss, where Moss used to live.
Yeah, and it's a large lot. It's an oversized lot, kind of like a one and a half parcel, if you looked at the others in the area.
Questions? Comments?
First reading?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion for the first reading.
Second. Have a motion second, place on for the first reading.
Does that get come from Mr. Brown?
Uh, I'm sure it is.
West Terry?
Yes.
Lieutenant?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Janice? An ordinance amending ordinance number 18-03 for the purpose of rezoning certain properties in City Hall. Many of the different zones around City Hall. Well, it looks like eight for the purpose of things to be on there, and it's like that's amazing.
So, ordinance 1809, Sonny, that's the zoning map or whatever. Or amending ordinance 1809, is that where we have adopted?
Yes. Yes.
They always say that. I'll ask Mike about it. I don't know why it says it's an amendment, but it's the language, I guess, for those who.
Oh, 1809 probably defined.
Just zoning ordinance. And not in traditional sense that we amending.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for that. The wall planing?
Mayor, Council, that the number four is a ordinance to rezone a material major property located on West Denver Street from R1 to C2 to for the construction of a cell tower on that property. As it stands right now, under an R1, you can construct a 100-foot tower. And AT&amp;T is asking for this rezone so they can do a 120-foot tower. It's a monopole construction. It will be located in the far eastern corner of the property. It will be fenced. It will be landscaped, and there will be an access road from Denver to the property. Since it abuts another commercial property and across the street and two other sponsored commercial property, it's not considered a spot zoning. And so, the planning committee looked at it and recommended sending it to the Council with a recommended, recommendation of passage. I do have a speaker here and also a representative from AT&amp;T that can answer any questions that you might have as far as design and lighting or anything that you might have questions on. This tower will increase the coverage of Greenwood on the west side of Greenwood. And I know personally, I live out in Meadow Brook, and I had AT&amp;T for over 20 years, and yet I couldn't receive or make a call from my house without a booster. And I didn't change services for it. But this will allow the other people that live in that area that are on AT&amp;T to throw away their boosters and get the service that they are paying for. So, if you have any questions, like I said, we have a representative here that can answer any questions you might have.
Do we require a site plant?
You're right.
Do we require a site?
Yes. We have site plant. AT&amp;T went through our existing ordinance and checked every box on the ordinance that it's. We play for doing business with.
Do we have same? Landscaping and that? How's the access going to be?
Access is going to be off West Denver, right across the street from Jones Creek. And it will follow the fence line down in parallel with the.
The.
Trail. And also, it will help the drainage onto the trail. If there's an issue that goes out, be addressed and there. Good construction.
I've got the survey. If you'd like to see it, please.
And so, it's going to be right there next to the trail?
Yes.
If you look at that. If you get on the trail on Denver and walk down to where the best way out is, where the woods or where the section intersects that goes under lap over into the bridge, that trail lies right there to the, off to the left if you're coming towards City Hall. Is that right?
How visible is that going to be from, say, Center Street?
It's going to be, like I said, it's going to be like a large power pole at the center. Single pole, monopole.
So, the reason for the rezone is R1, your maximum height is 6 feet?
Is 100 foot.
6. R3 is 100. It's R1 right now, right?
Yes. But you have the additional carriers on there that can bump it up to 100 foot.
Here's loud increases.
I got a question. There's no lighting on this? No understanding of that, right? Or the height does not require it?
That's right. As long as FAA doesn't require anything below 199 feet, 200 feet, doesn't have to be that.
So, how many carriers do you have on this pole?
AT&amp;T is our current anchor tenant. Roll is designed for four carriers.
But you've got one.
We've got AT&amp;T, yes.
So, will the roll be a controlled access or just at the gate be a controlled?
It depends on if Mr. Meeker would like to have controlled access or not. If the city wants us to put a gate out there, we can definitely put it out there. Normally, we would put it in about 45 feet so that any truck and trailer would be a crossplain road. Put a block gate there and then run it into both sides to keep traffic coming in if they require that. How far is the exit off the walk through?
It's my knowledge and where I've seen the flags and stakes, it's right beside it. I mean, within 10 feet.
But it will have landscaping.
And I'm pretty sure I saw it. I don't know if he has it, but I saw a chain link fence around. Was that was privacy fence?
Yes. Privacy fence.
Privacy fence with landscaping around what I saw. But it's, I'd say 10 or 15 foot off the asphalt.
So, that's going to require electricity there, correct? You're going to have to have electricity run out there to that?
That's correct.
We have to have power, telco, and fiber at the property site. And well, it's maintained for weed control, things like that on a long basis.
So, do you point there'll be poles coming, I guess, going down the access road or at least?
Normally, it's from that main road. There's an area of pole at Denver.
Right.
From there, they'll underground it.
Oh, so it'll be down where we're heading? With the underground, we, I guess, along the road?
Yes, we have 30-foot wide easement. Only it was with right side road that it addressed easements for that long.
Sonny, what are the current? I mean, our current ordinance says commercial towers must meet a minimum setbacks for the zoning duty which are located.
Yep.
So, what are those setbacks? Are you talking about 10 feet off this trail?
10 foot from the rears, seven and a half from side. That would be your normal setbacks.
I don't know if ours department heard that, but there'll be power going. Councilman Terry, you suggest a name of supply.
That's why I was wanting to be easement. I just, I mean, if it's a utility easement or how that's going to be.
I do have a question too. And Mr. Meeker and I have already discussed this a month or so ago. We have a continued drainage issue, as I think Mr. Bell mentioned. And Mr. Meeker generously allowed us permission to get on this property to address it, but we haven't yet. But we're going to have to because it's literally eroding underneath the trail. And I'm not asking for a swap by any means, but is there? When you look at that site, would there be consideration for that issue? I don't know how much you have to build up if this passes. We just want to be in on it. Again, if this passes, we would kind of like to be in on a conversation about how to. Not asking you if this is our problem, because I think it's spot on.
It is.
Right there where this was proposed.
It is. It is eating that whole out from under our.
And it's not anybody's fault. It's just what it is. Well, it's kind of our fault when we put the trail up, we didn't put the culvert in the right spot.
AT&amp;T has been working on this location for a long, long time. We've been talking with the Meekers for probably at least a year or more.
About 30 or 40?
Have we? Okay. I've been involved in the process about a year. So, my initial thing when I saw the property was, well, this is going to be maintenance. This is going to be issues and such as that. So, AT&amp;T has taken on the engineering design of the location. They will have all reinforcements that were required to initial. Initially, I've always talked to Mr. Meeker about some issues with the environmental. We had to make sure we avoided anything that would impede the drainage or wetland location out there at the drainage culvert. And anything that's done there, we will do. I mean, we're now a part of that maintenance program. And AT&amp;T is never going to make it where if that trail washes out or that door washes out, it's going to affect our revenue also. And we're going to do everything, and it'll be maintained to a travel standard. And I'll also mention that this location, as we just kind of discussed a little bit, has been going for a long time. And if we were unable, the reason for the extra 20 feet is because the connectance locations that AT&amp;T is requiring to get to with two other facilities. As I mentioned just a minute ago, there's no coverage there, but also coverage right here at City Hall is not very good either. This tower covers all the way downtown where we're standing right now, seven tenths of a mile west. And it'll cover from circumference of that, about a mile radius. But if we lose that 20 feet, and that's why we're here tonight, because we have to have that extra 20 feet to cover without having lack of coverage, which with the new 5G and the new first net that's coming in today to Arkansas and this location, AT&amp;T is required to meet those standards so that, you know, emergency personnel, fire department, police department, other emergency facilities, if they have the first net or someone has life alert or someone on that trail falls down, has some type of injury or some type of emergency situation, AT&amp;T is required to cover the entire city of Greenwood, and we can't leave those. And that's why we're here tonight. It's, and if we have to go back to drawing, we just need to know that you're going to have to two years for us to get this facility built.
And does it matter, thanks, the whole property?
Just the.
Just the. Just that?
65.
C2?
65.
It's just that property there?
Yes, that's correct.
When I was, I was here December 2000 when we passed the current ordinance. And at that time, there were, you know, the towers going up a lot. And a lot of people were up in arms about the whole deal. So, you know, and the big concern, of course, is appearance. How's this look? How high is it? How are we maintaining it? Once it's up, it's up. You know what I mean? It's hard to make one go away after it's there. So, I mean, that's been my, that'd be my concern about the whole thing is, you know, somebody tell me it's not going to look terrible when we stick it up there.
We did have a public meeting, and one person showed up. We showed him the design of the pole, told him where it was at, and he said, I have no problem with it. Turned around, walked out. And that was the only, I mean, the only person that has shown any interest or any question about it. Like I said, this is a monopole. And when we passed those ordinance there, I was here too. That was for those towers like we saw in Bell Park and other places. And this is a, this is a different animal. This is the newer design. This is the latest in technology is the monopole and not the big lights and lights and all that, so.
Sonny, the public meeting you're referring to is the park or the planning commission?
Yes, we had a public meeting at the planning.
Not another separate?
Yeah, the people, all the people around there received letters. And of course, we had it posted for, we've had it posted for a couple of months now. But like I said, there was only one person that showed up. And after he saw what it was planned, because all he saw was rezone, he didn't know what it was for. When he saw what it was for, he said, I have no issue with it.
I'll just, if I might interject, there's probably 80 to 90-foot trees along the walkway that's the trail right there. And we're in the thick of those, in the very back of the property, between the pond and the drainage. And at 120-foot tall and nonlit pole like that, it's going to provide fantastic coverage to Center Street, but you're going to see maybe if you're looking up at just the only angle would be on top of the mountain where the water tanks are at further west, you would see the top of it there. But if you're on that street, you won't see maybe 10 feet of it, because it's going to be that small. It's a cylindrical pole, and it's probably maybe four foot diameter at the top. Is that similar to what is an amendment to AT&amp;T's? It's in Caroline Cross Park? Yes. Caroline, Beams Avenue, there's two on Rogers Avenue. There in Chaffey Crossing, a lot of times we don't see them, but they're there. But those are, those are monopoles.
It's the ones you don't see at all at night and daytime. You just, you don't really see that first.
It's not like the one up in Beverly Hills.
Those are trees.
Those are terrible in that way.
Well, the hell is, I live on Denver Street. I drive it every day. So, it's something that's going to catch my eye. I'm just, I mean, I'm just being honest. I didn't go up back to public meetings. I don't come by the planning commission meetings, but I just want, I'm not Daniel. I don't want, once it's there, it's there. It's hard to get rid of it. And I don't want something just fall on, you know, sitting around through.
Mr. Jones, I had your hand up. I typically ask you to give a name, but that's.
Well, I just have a question. And I hear tower and for the west side, that's where I live. And, you know, where I used to live, it was a very big state, very big. And it had no towers throughout that state. So, you know, we didn't have hardly any coverage. And the west side is suffering as far as coverage. I know that I only live on cell phones, and if I go in my back office, it's gone, right in the house. So, and they have a unique way of making towers back a long ways away from here. And they used to, well, they still do, they're making pine trees out of them. They don't even look like towers. And that's the only way they could get them approved in cities in certain areas of that state. And I even was confused by, what is that? You know? You don't even know what it is.
Or are they issued, it would be the only pine tree down there. We'd have to make it an apple tree or something. Uh, thank you. I do have a question, and I think I know I looked at it before. It's been substance. If the base, the base circumference of this is, can you tell us that, Ralph? To kind of give us, and I know that is within the.
Just an idea of one that's 190 feet tall, the base is seven feet diameter, which is still pretty small for a big tower.
Right.
But it's hexagonal in shape. And so, it has sides to reinforce it, and it's made, it's designed, if a windstorm happens or in the Gulf, you watch the news, the pole is the only thing still standing when all towers are gone. So, it's designed very strong with, and the design of it makes wind pass smoothly. But it's, for this 120-foot pole, it's more than likely less than seven feet, probably between four and six feet.
And so, it goes from that obviously to?
To four feet at the top.
Or to what?
Four feet at the top.
So, was y'all's property replanted to just section off that part and then the rest of it? Okay.
What color is that? It's galvanized. What happens with, this gentleman here, I think, mentioned a green pole he saw somewhere around here. What happens with other colored poles is that they age poorly. And even if they say we're going to paint it with tower paint, it's still going to, I've seen them in hot springs where the blue paint's peeling off, looking real bad, things like that. And they fade. It's a trucking light, blue to match the sky. It's going to be overcast, they ain't going to see it worse. So, the galvanized has been proven to last a whole lot longer without changing appearance. And it seems the sky blends better with that because of the refracts on it, reflection.
I think everybody, I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but obviously the coverage is something we would be looking forward to for everybody, and certainly City Hall. The aesthetics is very important to us, as you can tell. But I think the good news is that, like you mentioned a while ago, you're up against that tree line. So, and it's not a quote unquote Bell Tower, the Bell Park Tower.
Does this cover, does this help the coverage there on the, up on the north side of the mansion? Street when you top that hill up there by the cemetery, you know?
I'm not sure. I got a map in the car. I'm going to get it real quick.
I'm not.
But it will cover it. I don't know how far that is from this location on West Denver, but it's about a mile radius.
It's the other side of that. It's the other side of Merrooke.
Is it further east than where we're at right now?
North. It's deep north.
How far north?
It went right up Main Street, over the hill.
It's probably, it probably would cover it. And it would cover.
There's a dead spot when you go around there.
That's going to be less than a mile.
If it's less than a mile, it'll cover it. Because the downtown area does not have a lot of big hills and like that. And that's the main thing.
Seems to me like it would be under a hill to where, under the gentry. Be the other side of the hill from Bell Park.
I think most of the adopt orders are emergency clauses.
I just want to clarify. I was asking Sonny, so y'all will talk about, I asked him to make sure we had something in his thumb that was, there's nothing in shock, just we're doing our jobs, councilman. The landscaping, the hope of fixing fire. And I believe before we've had stuff that got done, it didn't, it didn't end up getting finished out like it should have. And, and the road itself, we, we, well, what I've seen y'all planning on cutting out and compacting back for you. But I just want to make sure, that's why I was asking Sonny, make sure we had something to hope to fix the fire on landscaping. Because that's, there's one people walks that trail.
Sure.
And that's probably, so we're high, you know, and then off six of us getting them on goal. What the heck is that? You know, so, and I'm giving.
Why is this an emergency? Always have to ask.
Uh, change of reading, why I put emergency on that is because, you know, of course, they would like to start on the construction. And if we go through pre-readings, it's going to be in November, which would be in the middle of, you know, weather situations. And I felt like it justified uh asking for the emergency clause.
You've got to have bars.
I don't agree with it. Okay.
I mean, like I said, it is, it's a matter of uh, a window.
You know I didn't agree before.
It's a, it's like I said, it's a window of construction. And uh, I'm sure they'd like it uh started on it before then. Now, I'm sure they're not going to be able to finish it before then, but at least they'd give them a, a head start on.
How long does it take? Well, it depends on uh, once you get the, the contractors lined out and directly on site, it can be completely within a twenty-one, twenty-eight day period. The main thing that holds you up is the curing of the concrete that the foundation's made out of. Takes about eighteen to twenty-one days to cure that.
I don't know if we're in emergency clause, but just because this is actually part of the first public meeting, some people have heard this.
Well, we had a public meeting with the planning department and, and letters were sent out to everybody that uh around there. So it, and it was published and posted.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Post the motion, first reading.
First reading, I will. Including emergency clause.
I think you have to first read first, then invoke it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Eric?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
No.
Ms. McDaniel?
Good.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Mr. Shane.
Make a motion, we wave, second, third reading. Yes, can we repeat this? Or?
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's only three yes.
Or, or, or?
Oh, or four?
Four, four and one.
I see.
I'm going to go on one.
They see.
All right, yeah, got it. The master.
There's six.
Throws me. All right. Uh, that's a passive boundary. And I'll forget. An ordinance, amending ordinance number eighteen dash zero, Mount Park, this uh resounding certain property in City of Greenwood, amending the official zoning map of City of Greenwood, declaring emergency.
Make a motion, we wave, second, third reading. Second. Have a motion, second to wait, but uh, second, third reading.
Ms. Terry? Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Terry?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Shane.
Three, three, two, three yes, two no. Thank you so much. And, and we're, it's basically this one, emergency clause, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's the way.
The wave is the second, third reading.
Uh, both, uh, yes, did I choose both?
Okay, then that passes bound with the order.
Do I make a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Adopt it.
Adopt the emergency clause?
Adopt the order.
Adopt the order. Thank you.
We're going, adopt the order.
Adopt the orders.
Second.
We have a motion, second to adopt the order.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Terry?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Shane.
Yes.
That passes boundary, clear as well.
Thank you, please, Ms. Brown. Have a talk with emergency.
Yeah, okay.
We have a motion. Make a motion.
Yes. Is that one of the top?
Do that. Say it about like a second.
Yes, sir. So this will go into effect because it is adopted, it'll go into effect, are you ready? Marana?
Good. Good. Thank you. Um, number five, I do believe this, this number five, five.
Outstanding health insurance receivable. What we're dealing with here is we have an ordinance ten thirty-five with amended ordinance ten twenty-five, which gives the um, municipality the ability for an employee who is retired municipal employee with at least twenty years of service has an option to continue with the health insurance, regardless of whether they have any other health insurance. And it says that if you declare that if a full retired employee or official age of fifty-five or over completed twenty years of service may participate in the municipal healthcare plan under either individuals, spouse covers or family covers, if they're eligible to receive retirement benefits, pays both the employer and employee contribution to the health plan and notifies the city within thirty days after the official date of retirement. All those criteria were met for one of our employees back in two thousand and eighteen who asked for and elected to continue the healthcare cover. We pre-billed that because it is something that we don't expand. And the bills went unpaid. Two months later, the employee sent a letter or a little note to us, to the City of Greenwood, saying, please stop my Blue Cross Blue Shield and full paying coverage uh effective October thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and signed by the person. Um, we have two months of billing, uh, November, uh, September and October of two thousand and eighteen, which is still on our balance sheet, it's still on our books as a receivable. It is a valid bill. We have evidence and documentation, but we have sent letters, we've made phone calls and they have all gone unanswered and unheeded. And it is two thousand and twenty. And I'm looking for either the approval to write off the balance of one thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighteen cents, or if you advise, we seek some sort of legal recourse, because it is a valid bill.
I said, one thousand, two hundred?
One thousand one fifty-two eighteen. Two months worth of our health coverage.
That's very brutal.
It's been outstanding since October of two thousand and eighteen, in two years.
And, and what's it going to cost us to do that?
I, I have no idea. I don't know what the, what he would suggest as a legal recourse is.
We would have to file suit against the individual. That's probably a hundred and sixty-seven dollar fifty-seven five-odd fee, fifty dollar service fee. And then uh, since I've sent my job description, I've been before, there's a lot of bucks. Um, I don't know whether they're working or if there's a computer around somewhere. You may get a piece of paper that it was with. Um, if this individual is retired, you can't raise retirement, you can't raise social disability. So I don't know enough about the individual to tell you what it's worth, but.
Right though, that would be my recommendation.
They totally don't have a job. They're retired.
They're retired, yes.
They live.
They had, they had health issues, which prompted them to move the insurance for a couple of months.
They lived in the county? Pardon? They lived in the county?
I don't know anything. This happened right after I started.
Probably rounded off.
I know plans. Come on, let's agree.
You think we should do that and adopt, Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Make a motion, we round it off.
Second. Ten motion, seconds to round it off.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Number six is twenty nineteen and twenty twenty contract with library. We uh, basically, it was pointed after us by the auditor, I believe.
Let's slate of audit.
Let's slate of audit. Right, this is our intention that we did not have a current contract with library. They said, no, we have had, I don't have any years.
No.
Forever. Had this within our budget to pay. And, and, and I'm only going about, I know it's just twenty-five hundred dollars. I think it's to be upfront with that. I think, I think an email that I saw from Mr. Henry's assistant actually had a little less than that, right? For some reason.
What, what was that?
Twenty-four thousand nine hundred and something dollars. I can't remember. Something less than five, twenty-five hundred.
Right.
It was just kind of.
So it's twenty-four thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I wonder everybody looking at it. We used to pay him twenty-four thousand. Now we're going to give him twenty-five hundred. Sorry. No wonder you looked at me like that.
There was some change.
Yeah, it was, it was very.
It's probably a big off.
Yes. So, just so you know, sorry. Tell them in a shock, especially in the library.
That is all within the budget.
That is not within the budget.
So we've been paying it, we just don't have this contract.
Correct, that's correct.
It's paperwork.
We've been paying it because there's a state law that allows us to, and I wonder, should that be, I, I think I presented, I gave y'all a resolution that I typed up because state laws does say that our contracts are supposed to be by resolution, actually.
I make a motion, we adopt this resolution.
But I have a question. Um, Mike, this is for the year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Can we do the resolution? I think you, I gave you a copy of that resolution that I did. Can we do the resolution that says like, we have this perpetual contract with them until we don't? Because otherwise I'll have to remember to do this every single year.
I don't think you can. I don't think you can. It's all right with me, man. I don't think a lot of it is.
Okay. And I also want to amend this resolution. I typed it up really fast, like fifteen minutes, four or five. Um, and, and reference that state law number in there, up top, because.
I do think I figured that.
Yeah, that is being helped.
Kind of a good explanation why we're going to begin with.
Yes. Okay, now.
I say again.
Make, I were, I amend my motion to adopt the resolution with the change mentioned by Ms. Terry.
Give me a second.
Okay. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's for both, so we're not going to in twenty twenty contracts. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Uh, number seven is Finance Department Resolution, set a virtual restricted asset account for sewer bond principal.
One.
As most of you know, we have been talking with, through the Water Sewer Department about the bond covenant. And the bond covenant is on the water bond. Water bond, um, net income must be, well, the water systems revenue operations net income must be a hundred and ten percent of all debt service requirements related to the water sewer. And we have two bonds. We have a water bond and a sewer bond. The sewer bond is set to expire or pay off or retire uh four fifteen of twenty twenty-two. The sewer department, Water Sewer Commission wanted to pay that bond off early so that we would get out of the uh situation that we're in where we're under the one hundred and ten percent bond covenant. So we laid out a plan to do that and we were told that when we go back to the refinanced or renegotiated bond, we cannot pay that bond off early. That's part of the stipulation for a half percent interest. So doing that, that made us go back to the drawing board. And all they asked us to do is come up with a plan. The plan the Water Commission came up with was to increase the sewer rate temporarily. And then it was to go into effect at the beginning of this year, somewhere around March. And that's exactly when everything shut down and COVID happened. And we decided that probably wouldn't be a good idea, even though that they were looking at it being temporary until such time as the bond was paid off. And then they were looking at probably readjusting that rate. That also was not necessarily a good thing to promise, because if you were to make that statement and then something happens with your revenue streams and you must keep that amount that's being charged now in effect, uh, looks like you, you lied when you made the statement. So we didn't want to go with it necessarily a temporary. We had to look for a, a way to come up with something that we could do in order to appease the bond holder, uh, and suffice the situation that we had with the debt service covenant. So we came up with an accounting technique called insubstance debt defeesance. And that is a formal process. And there's also an informal way of doing it. I suggested it to the Water Department, Water Commission. They liked the idea. They wanted me to verify that this is feasible with our auditor and our CPA that does our, our water sewer financials at year end, the audit. And the formal process means it comes off our books. The actual bond itself, the debt service comes off our books. It's placed in an, the amount that we would set aside for the reserve is placed in an irrevocable trust. That's with a third party. Well, that makes it less liquid. We don't have necessarily control over that until the bond's paid off in twenty twenty-two. What we suggested, or what I suggested to them, is that we reserve or restrict the amount of the principal that's left to pay in a restricted account on our books as a virtual account, dedicated solely to reserve the amounts that's left as the principal of interest payment or debt payment for the uh walk, for the sewer bond, excuse me. The next bond payment that on the principal is done ten fifteen of twenty twenty. So I would like to do it after that bond payment is made by our, um, by the Arkansas Development Finance Authority, where they're going to actually make that payment. That puts our debt uh at three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. We would reserve that amount. And we would keep it there as the guarantee or collateral for the bond, thus nullifying the bond covenant totally from the sewer bond side. We are adequately covered on the water side for the water bond. It's the sewer bond that's dragging us down because it's renewing two hundred thousand dollars, basically two hundred and twenty thousand of revenue stream that we cannot use in our net income calculation. This would flow it right back. This would then become a footnote in our financial audit, financial report, showing what the impact would be with our collateralized debt on our. showing what the impact would be with our collateralized debt on our, restricted on our books. So it's a, it's a win-win. We, it's also more liquid for us. What we thought we would do is that every, every time the bond principal payment is made, we then can move the money that's equivalent to the bond payment out of it so that the reserve stays at the amount of debt that we have. So we can flow the money back into city sales and use tax. That's where this money would come from. And that's what they wanted to do anyway. They already got approval to do it, and we found out the actual wording in the actual, uh, says it cannot be paid off early due to the low interest rate. So we have a, uh, resolution that basically says that we want to establish the amount as a new account on our books for the sewer bond, or sewer revenue bond, series two fifteen within the sewer fund, to establish account twelve five sixty-five sewer bond principal fund set up within the sewer department. And we're gonna move what, what I just told you. If we do this, we'll do it in the, right after the October payment, and reserve three hundred twenty-six thousand dollars from the city sales and use tax, which right now is over four million. So they have plenty of money right now. This would be their idle cash that they're reserving as a collateral for the debt. That's what we're trying to do with this, uh, resolution.
Would, uh, are we not altering the budget then? I mean, would that not be a, uh, accordance, I mean, the, I mean, we're altering the budget.
We do resolutions for budget amendments. Which is what this is. This is saying you're allowing me to move the principal amount from city sales and use tax to a restricted account for purposes of satisfying the bond covenant. It, what this doesn't tell you is what the dollar amount was, because that's gonna be fluid. The dollar amount is, like I said, it would be established at three hundred twenty-six thousand of the four million.
Jim, we passed the budget by ordinance, though, right?
We do. We do budget amendments by resolution.
Did it pass the budget by ordinance?
No.
Really?
We're only talking about a year.
You're talking about a year and a half, two, or just about two.
A year and a half.
Because in twenty twenty-two, it all comes back.
Right.
What you're doing is parking that money to guarantee your collateralize the, the debt. That's all you're doing.
Hey, Tom? Is this right, or? You got, on the, on your second, whereas, it says series twenty sixteen.
It says fifteen.
In your third, you're talking about series twenty fifteen.
It's only, it's only one. This is, uh, series twenty fifteen.
Yes, it's twenty fifteen, I'm thinking.
The second one is what you're figuring. The third one's right.
Um.
The second one is right. It should be twenty fifteen.
I make a motion we adopt the resolution changing the twenty sixteen to twenty fifteen and the resolution setting up a restricted asset account.
Second. Make a motion in a second.
Mr. Ricker, second half?
Yes.
Yeah. Mike Terry?
Yes.
Paul Dow?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
And Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Brown Maker?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Marsh. Number eight is, uh, Parks Department, Fall Fest Decision.
Uh, it's a broken record, but I was waiting, uh, last time we were all together. Um, I was kind of waiting on the festival, Fall Festival in Arkansas, which is for April, and they canceled. So that was my recommendation and that of the Parks Commission that I canceled Fall Festival for this year and just regrouped. I talked to every, every, all the vendors that had even considered coming, which was only a tiny few, and they agreed. So I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention. I know it sounded a broken record, but most people do these days, and, you know, it just kind of boils down to when I talk to the vendors, it really doesn't matter what we think, but I know people that have been sick, and, you know, I would hate to know that I, I'm just gonna take it on my shoulders, we, I, the festival, and someone eventually became ill because of it. So that's my recommendation.
So what pause?
Um, you know, I, I, I've talked to the, I think his name right this minute. I talked to him right after we kind of made that decision, and he has had, um, his mother pass away and his dad, it, it has dementia real bad, and he was in a really, oh, I said, you pray for that family as well. And he said, can you just call me back? And I said, no problem. So, but I, I'm pretty sure they'll work with this. I mean, it's been tough for them as well, and they love us, so. I, I don't have a true answer, but I just know that he was in a bad situation when I called, so I haven't called him back, so. I mean, the worst thing that we, that would happen is if we would lose our deposit. And right at this moment, I did not bring my figure, but it wasn't, it wasn't like a ten thousand dollar deposit or anything, because, um, but I don't think that will happen. I think they'll transfer it on over to, like, spring next year. Because we talked to him together.
Yeah, I was sitting on that phone conversation, initial phone conversation.
The first, the first one, yeah.
They were very willing to work anyway. And at that time, we were all optimistic that, right, we're at Fall Festival, that's a long way away.
Yeah, yeah.
From July fourth, and here we are, and I think they're gonna look at it the same way. And he, as he said before, he would have to give the band to get their recommendation. No guarantee.
We're pulling one, here we go.
I, I can't hardly wait, it is.
Figure better than ever.
I hope so.
Well, if the vaccine comes out, we got a winter bed.
We made it.
And, and I don't know if you want to elaborate on it right now, too, but there, there's also discussions among myself and Tammy and the Parks Commission, if anybody's here, Otis is here, but about a different way of doing the trail.
Trick or treat on the trail.
Trick or treat on the trail. We're looking at doing drive-through, and you will, I mean, you can't, you can't have the kids line up on the trail. You can't have, I mean, it's just, it's just unfeasible, so. And a chamber built, Bob's not here tonight, and Bob came, and Bob purpose, and talking about even the parade, the Christmas parade, which is their, baby, day of the chamber. Just looking at any way we can have something, and not the same, but it'll just be different in a different manner. But Fall Festival would be extremely, it would be no, no less hard to make.
We have talked about having it at Bell Park, because we usually have it on the trail. And of course, we include the police department, the fire department, and anybody. The school, the school is really the length, that started the trick or treat on the trail. Joella Skaggs, she's, she just wanted to give back to the community, because the community does eventually with school during the year. So we just, we were at the end of the trail, and we just kind of tagged along. But now, I talked to Joella, and she thought that it was a great idea, that we move it to Bell Park. People would just drive through with their cars. And Bob has come up with an idea. He found a little, a laugh with Daniel and I, like, ah, no, because it sounds so silly. But things are just silly, so you just have to go with it. But he found this little butterfly net that has a long handle, and he said, you know, if, if maybe one of the banks or somebody who's talking to some people, get sponsors to buy those and hand them to the cars as they come through, stick that little net out, let the kids away, give the candy, and, you know, but the school is gonna have their, um, their groups that always hand out candy, do that, and then, of course, we will be there. Um, and I, I won't include the fire department, we're gonna have to have a little crowd control on parade, but it'll be a one-way in and a one-way out. It'll just, they'll just be making the loop. But, I mean, it's something for the kids to at least put their costumes on and be in the car and look out the window, you know? It'll be something for them to do. And it's silly and it's crazy, but, you know, we can dress up and be silly and crazy with the festival, and so. Um, I just invite everybody that wants to. I think it'd be great PR for you guys to come out and help us, and I love to have everybody out and, you know, make it a success. I think people are just looking for something to do, especially the kids.
All right. Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Number nine is the Street Department Orders To Wait For Defensive Insurance Purchase.
I'll be excited, I got any more man than one. Geez, wait. Time is opposed. Dump truck. Little back history. Shit, the motors, we intend to purchase a Hino dump truck for a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-two dot eighty-four dollars. They have been able, not been able to deliver that due to, one, the Hino had, uh, uh, some hiccups in it. They wanted to, before COVID, straighten that out and deliver it. We did have a loaner Mack truck. They took that back for, uh, they leased it long-term. They took it away from it. So I, and they have come back two times, saying that they couldn't deliver the Hino for now for COVID, plus the, plus the bugs they had with the, um, you know. And I started looking around a little bit, trying to find another new truck, and with COVID and everything else going on, it was, uh, it was a new shit to give a truck right now. It was not drawn upon ground, it was not held. We are in a push for a truck, and this truck came on, uh, to our attention, and negotiated a price of forty-six thousand dollars. That's a, say, maybe five thousand, five, maybe four. And, uh, uh, the truck is nineteen thousand, well, twenty thousand miles on it right now. It was a Federay-owned, uh, truck in Colorado. They used it on a three-thousand-acre site for, uh, onsite hauling, so they didn't very, use it very much. That's the reason for the low lobby. And we had driven the truck, gone through it. It's a, um, a purged, good truck, I believe. And the reason for the emergency clause, this truck could go away soon. It's, it's backed out just like we need it.
Two thousand and ten, your national awards card?
Yes, sir.
Okay, twenty thousand miles on it?
Yes, sir.
So, you know how I am, dude. So what's the deal with the Mack, when they take it back?
They have the, they have a long-term lease on it.
They have a long-term lease on it? So it's gone?
It's gone, yes.
It was a shoe bar.
It's not, it's not the picture of this truck that you're referring to.
Is that the actual truck, or is that just a similar picture?
This truck?
It's that truck.
I have more pictures of that fall meeting.
I'm gonna leave you with some else's problem. I'm not saying that trucks got problems, but.
Well, try and find a truck now, at this time. We've been needing one.
We don't have one?
No.
We do not have one.
Because the other one was on lease?
Yes.
And they figured that.
It, yes. We were, they were, they were lying, that's good.
There wasn't an option to buy?
No.
Because we ordered the other.
We ordered it, yeah.
That's the only option.
So do we have a mechanic or, or a mechanic check it out?
Yes.
I'm assuming we cancel the order for the other?
Yes, I cancel that order of a twenty-seven block.
So there's, there, there's no truck in state Arkansas?
That I, I. I've looked.
Okay, Ralph? Sure, there's a carry somewhere with the truck. Not that we're proud of. Make a thing better, here's New Mexico carries. Or do you feel like Mexico?
I make a motion we pass the ordinance for the first reading, my pile of the long.
It's that there.
Make a motion in a second.
Mike Terry? Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Wait a minute, do you have some of the workers involved?
Oh, because it was much harder to re-go.
Wait, I, I need to say something. I should have done it before the voting started. I, I've got something that was, I obtained during the whole Mack truck. More, we have, that we can mount, uh.
It looks better in Mack, John.
It would, it would look better in Mack.
This morning. Oh, so the.
You know, I first read it, I had a lot of. Tim Terry?
It's against our better judgment, but I'll go with it.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker? That's a by majority. You know, that's why you committed a bidding for the partners, I mean, not for, declaring a merger for other purposes.
So is emergency that it, it's actively.
It's up for sale.
And you think that.
I'd like to purchase it before it gets sold.
I make a motion, wait a second, I'm ready.
Second.
Motion second, wait, second, third, ready.
Mike Terry?
No.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
What's that?
That's a by majority. You have a motion to adopt it? Anybody feel a void?
Yeah, I feel it. I'll make a motion to adopt it.
Right.
Motion second to adopt.
Mike Terry? Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
What's that?
That's a by majority.
Motion to make emergency, oh, this is.
Second. Make a motion in a second to enact emergency clause.
Mike Terry?
No.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
What's that?
Okay, that's one for you.
I did.
And then you were just. Mayor voted to do that, so that carries. That's a by majority.
Just for clarification, goes way out over there, no, no, yes, little situations. Clear, Michael, good luck.
Thank you for saving eighty-four thousand dollars.
We'll see where that thing is solid over there.
You have eighty-four thousand dollars to play.
Yeah, that's, oh.
I never mind, but can we, can we right here and use that dirt pile if it was rough?
We should. And the grass is growing on it.
Yeah.
I can do whatever you want.
Here it comes.
Yes.
They didn't recite eighty-five thousand, it's, it's just felt perfect.
No, we expended, it's not gonna be a good one.
He didn't tell you, though, they said they could deliver it at, what is it, May through August of next year? That's what is off, maybe off.
I'm just saying, that money was budgeted, so it was, it was going to be spent, so.
And now it's not gonna be spent, so you're saving eighty-four thousand dollars off your budget. Um, which you could use also.
That's good.
Was it eighty-four?
A hundred and thirty-one thousand.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, that was a long second.
Next, next item is, uh, Orders To Do, that's a challenge, maker, what do you all?
Thanks, Mr. Marsh, for the, uh, I don't know what you're.
Put this on first reading, my pile only?
My pile only.
There we go.
Can we do this first? We all want to do this.
I asked that, don't ask.
We talked about that, but it was counted.
We got about two firsts.
Yeah, exactly, but no need to.
I say can't be.
You know what you need to. The first failed this one.
Are we hiring to fix the truck that you just opened?
I think that's gonna leave a drastic. We have a mechanic, where'd he go? He went.
He done with that.
He did. Oh, did, yeah, of course I did. We have a motion to adopt ordinance.
I don't start.
I have a second.
You have a second.
Mike Terry?
Sure.
Yes or no? Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel? Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker. That's by majority. Uh, the ordinance will authorize in the city, if you're going to give that business to Sean Maker, declaring emergency for other purposes.
I have a motion, wait a second, sir.
Second.
Lance Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Tim Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
First thing.
That's by majority.
I have a motion to wait a down.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Lance Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Tim Terry.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Motion to make emergency clause.
Second. The motion second to enact emergency clause, not triple sentence.
Lance Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Do get there. Yes.
Tim Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
No.
And Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Uh, first thing.
Thank you, gentlemen. If the council would consider, uh, I have a gentleman here, uh, that is actually not that far down. Where are you?
Is he bigger?
No. It's a different name or either.
He's next up in your lease agreement.
Yeah, it's only one. Yeah, so the lease agreement, do you mind, we just went out, Mr. Angeloni's here for that. So, uh, Lance, that's your item, water tap fee discussion. Sorry, I didn't do that sooner.
He needs contact me. I know we've been having some trouble with Jamesport bill out there as far as, and he's putting that new equipment place in there on Highway seventy-one. Which, you know, we have our cooking fee, which is, it's twenty thousand dollars for that fee, which is. The concern is, that's a pricey deal for somebody who could be having the cough up to get water. I read the part of the minutes from, and John may be able to help you here, I read part of the minutes where, uh, I know we've been trying to get the water rights out there. And we're eventually going to have to get water on the side of seven one for the fire station that's going out there, that type of thing anyway. So, when he contacted me about if there's anything we can do, well, I read the minutes from the commission meeting where Judge Parker, I still refer the way it was Judge Parker, uh, had made a comment to where if he could get a release, a release sign, that, that tap fee can be cut almost in half.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm just, we're having this discussion so we can clarify things for him to see where he's at on this, because I don't think, I mean, I think Jamesport could give you water, but he's still not going to have the fire protection and that type of deal. So, I'm trying to figure out what the release deal is for maybe to cut that water tap in half for him.
Well, here's, here's something I thought. The ordinance says the commission will make a recommendation to the council, and our recommendation concerns only recouping him while he's taking Jamesport to get a service area. But I thought something since then, and this has not been approved by the commission, I'll make that upfront, this is just something I thought of after the fact. We're going to need an easement from him coming up the side, his property going, going up seventy-one, going up north, surround sewer and water. Now, water ain't coming in many directions, but sewer has to flow downhill, so pick which direction you use. So, I think what we could do is in trading an easement for half of that twenty thousand feet off. You know, half off, forgive us an easement. Um, I think that's fair. Now, for ten thousand dollars, he's going to get a fire monitor there to provide, you know, fire suppression water. It's actually the, for the water, it's tied to the building permit, because we knew we were going to be buying fire suppression water over there where they wouldn't necessarily hook on. Where, where the sewer, the fees, only if you hook on to our system. But for the water over there, it's just, that's the building permit. And I think if he's willing to give us an easement, I think giving him half off on that fee, fair for both parties.
So you're going to take that back to the commission though?
They're everything it's supposed to, yeah.
Okay.
Won't that make, uh, uh, doesn't property values increase and, you know, they have, you know, water in the sewer?
Yes, they do, uh, yes, they do. Uh, there's no doubt about that. And, you know, sewer won't be over there for a little while, we'll probably get sewer over there before they build the fire department, we know what it's going to be, but that's our goal, be over there for sewer before then. But having fire, uh, strip, the commercial buildings require a fire hydrant within so much distance. And this saves him the cost of having to either, if Jamesport, we will provide the water, he can run his own line from Jamesport. But I tell you, six inch line is a lot more expensive, six or eight inch line for a fire hydrant is a lot more expensive than a two inch line for your, for your whole building. So it's saving that expense. And, uh, but yeah, it does improve the values, but, but also easements are worth something too. So I, I think it's fair. But is that in Jamesport's service district? Probably is, I, I would probably lean, yeah, that is. But is that a problem?
I think.
Uh, not for fire suppression. If we, they only do the, you know, we buy two kinds of water service. We buy what goes in your building and what comes out the fire hydrant. Jamesport only does what comes into your building. So they can't prevent us from buying the fire hydrant, so, like, I have to let us do that.
Mr. Angeloni?
Yeah, I've been dealing with you, of course, in, in Jamesport. And they're not willing to help me much in all that. I mean, I'm with y'all's mercy, I probably do, because there's, there is an easement down seventy-one. That I've talked to the highway department, and they told me that's the only option that that's what I could use. But I'm not sure that Jamesport is willing to do that, but, I mean.
They have to serve you with the inside water. If they, if they won't or can't, then we can take you over, my understanding of law. But that'd mean that you don't have to spend some money to do it their way, though.
So anyway, what was their, what was their, did they have a reason for not wanting to really help you at all? No, so, um, I, I talked, Donnie, I think.
Donnie Sanford, yeah.
I talked to him, and he gave me a something cook, I can't remember his name, he's like their.
Mark Cook, their engineer, yeah.
I talked to him last week about running a water line down seventy-one. I said, I'll ditch the ditch, I'll put whatever water line you require in there, all you guys have to do is hook it up on each end, and I will, I'll pay for everything. And they're like, no, we don't want to do that.
Well, what they want, what they expect you to do for water service, I mean, I'm talking about the inside of the building, what they expect you to do?
I don't know, I mean, I'm.
They have to provide you a service, otherwise we get to you, that's my understanding.
That's what I'm, I mean, if, if you, I'll give you the ease, I mean, the easement that you're talking about, any easement that you need on there.
Right.
I'm a big, I'm not going to have anything except for one building in the center anyway, the rest of it is going to be grabbing. Uh, the ten thousand dollars cut in half, I mean.
Well, twenty cut in half, two-ten, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the ten, two to ten, I mean, that, that's a whole lot better. The only thing that I would ask is, can I get my building permit? When, when, I, I still lack a little bit on it, just because I haven't sent it back and get a stamp on it from an engineer. But can I still get my building permit while we're waiting on you guys to punch a hole under the, uh, or a line underneath the seventy-one?
Well, you can pay the ten thousand upfront, we're going to get it under there, we've got a contractor laid on, we've got someone pulled up from the state. And we expect to have it, what, three terms soon?
Well, I would, I would, I would take the consumption from mayor, that this, it turns out too, that we just, that the wrong commission, that if he's willing to, if the commission's willing to go for the easement deal and cut his tap in half, and he's willing to pay that, that money upfront, there shouldn't be any reason why we can't give him a building permit.
Are we, are we?
I agree a hundred percent.
Are we going to be able to provide him water?
That's, that's what we're talking about.
Well, firefighting water, yes.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about paying for it.
Yeah, I think the issue, Mr. Angeloni, by the way, I, I don't know you that well, but you are a saint, sir, to put up with everything that you've been putting in with and, and all, I, I mean that, you, you've been very cordial. But what concerns me for you is, unless I'm mistaken, and I think you told me that they, as in Jamesport, told you that we would not be able to serve, get you water, get you water.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I'm, I think when I talked to Lance, he.
That they wouldn't allow that?
But I mean, I think, I think if you guys roll, you can give me water, I have that.
Well, not the inside of the building. We, we're going to give you a fire hydrant, they'll give you firefighting water if you have a fire over there, but that's, we can't not provide you fire.
So if the fire, if that's water, it'll be fixed in two minutes.
It's in their service area.
But if they're refusing.
Yeah.
That becomes a different matter.
Yeah, they refuse.
Trying that they won't do it.
If they refuse, that's different. But if they don't, if they just, if, if his choice is us, and I think he wants it and we want him, I think we're right back to square one on this, this much bigger problem and issue that we've been dealing with for a long time, on whose area is that? And what isn't area? Uh, because as we all know, and John knows for sure, that they, we were told different, I said we, I wasn't in that meeting, lines in the ground means it's yours.
That's not necessarily true.
I know, that's what I'm saying, the unanswered question of an area.
Right. That was my comment to Mr. Angeloni, where.
It's not his problem.
Talking about us getting in water. In the conversation we've had up here in many months about this Jamesport bill, and I'm trying to understand what, who necessarily the problem is.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we've never really determined that there is a water service or water, water right area. I mean, what says we can't go our way to lines on top of theirs? I mean, honestly, I mean, we, nobody's ever, nobody's ever walked up here with a piece of paper of occupation of the states and you can't do that.
I have a, I have a map that they drew out that lays out their area. Now, just because, it's their map, that means official. The way I understand, the official way it's supposed to go is a county will give them an area out in the county. And if they can, if the county properly gives them an area which is well defined, and later our city limits goes out, you know, goes into that area, it's still theirs. And which I think is what's happened in this, in this area. I'm assuming that the county's properly given it to them. Um, but that's my understanding of how it's supposed to work. I'm, I'm supposed to go out and talk with Donnie even next week or so, I can try to follow up and go out and see him and talk to him about this issue and see.
It's a sad, we got a guy talking to a legitimate business man. Something that's in my mind, simple water. But nobody wants to, I mean, they're, they're denying service for what reason? I mean, I don't.
Did they deny that in writing?
Well, that's why I'm playing.
I don't know if they're denying the service, I think they're telling him that we can't serve that property.
And they're probably.
Why won't they give him water? Then why won't they give him water?
I think they will give him water. I, I think if he pays their tap fee and runs a line to them, they will give him water.
No, sir.
No, I think you said they would.
Here, here's the deal. You guys own the property next to me. Which is on Mountain Side Road. There is a gas line easement that runs all the way across the back of my property, all the way across the back of your property, all the way to Mountain Side Road. Me and Mayor talked about it, I've had it surveyed last week. Jamesport will put a tap there if I could get an easement from the city to run a water line through there.
I don't have a problem, I mean, it's not.
It'd be on.
I don't have a problem giving, here's us and he's a plus, we give him a ten thousand dollar. I mean, that sounds fair.
Well, that's on a gas company though.
But the, the gas company have to buy all of it.
Right, right.
Well, I've talked with the gas, and they're supposed to be getting back to me, but that is, I mean, I, I don't know the laws about easements and all that, but I, I don't think that's just a regular utility easement. That the city would have to say, yes, I can use that, and then would the gas company have to sign off on it also?
I, I, I don't know, I'm not that smart either, but I think they would, when it, and, and it's just a matter of asking, I guess, but, uh, because that's, you know, that made sense to me. I, I, I even, now that, that was, now that, that already, and of course, I've been talking to someone, we've had all these other discussions. So that, what you were suggesting was to go ahead, but that was to get Jamesport, correct?
Yes, and that's still get Jamesport, but, I mean, to me, it makes more sense to me, I either ten thousand, which I wouldn't have to pay you anyway. You take an easement wherever you were talking about, it's my problem, that's fine.
Well, if you, if you get Jamesport water, you don't have to pay us ten thousand.
Yeah, you do.
Why, John?
For the fire suppression.
John, every annexation that we do, uh, and what we're looking at, it says we provide fire protection and police protection. Now, how the fire department wants to determine how to give that protection, but that's in every ordinance that we sign.
To recoup fee for the infrastructure.
It does, uh, fire protection is not infrastructure.
A fire hydrant, a water line.
It would be like us annexing somebody and then saying, you've got the pony up for a new police car and a police, policeman to cover your, uh, your police protection.
Developers regularly put in infrastructure.
But it is, it's not a no golfer, it is a single person.
As was I when I was almost forced to put in a forty thousand dollar water line and fire hydrant.
You were outside the city limits, we were, we did not annex you, and we did not promise you fire protection or police protection. That is state law, John. That is the state statute that we provide.
State law's not for, for water, it's that and fire protection, we still provide fire protection.
We're not going to charge you on the fire department.
Exactly, it's fire protection is totally different than with water for a commodity.
You don't have water though, you don't have fire protection.
You could have, you could have a tanker truck, you could have mutual aid, however the fire department decides that they're going to determine what is fire protection, that's up to them.
Well, fire.
But as a city, we say, we're going to give you fire protection and police protection.
ISO is not going to be very important necessarily by.
Yeah, we're trying to keep ISO, I'm sorry, let's go one at a time, okay?
Here, here. A problem that we've got to address more than anything is the buddy heads of the city agree with the Jamesport water.
Agreed.
We've got, we've got to figure out what the problem is. And when we find that problem, we need to fix it, because it shouldn't be that difficult for one individual to get water to a business. We got to get water on that, on the west side of seventy-one regardless. That's just a known fact, where it will grow that out there? We got to have, we got to have, it's just like highway tends to burn, we put the water in there, and the sewer, it all started flourishing over there. Well, it's not going to happen. I would sue him, have our water, that's the, that's what I'm talking about. But we got to fix the problem of, of the button head, and, and we don't, I don't need to argue about where, how we're going to put a fire out, we, we've got one best fire departments in the country, so. That's not the issue, it's, it's getting this gentleman water and fixing our problem of whether that's our area or that's Jamesport, or why they want to sell it to us at a reasonable price, they give us one number, they give us another number. We're not communicating with them from somewhere along the line.
I completely agree, there's a much bigger issue, and he's unfortunate.
He's in the middle.
Pawning the game.
These guys hurt him a lot.
You know, we're talking about this annexation of the seventy-one corridor.
Exactly.
We've got Jamesport water service area, we've got Burton's deal out there, and we're all sitting here as stalemates staring at each other. How's that ever going to resolve itself?
If, if you didn't do anything other, if you didn't go to another meeting, and I've been to three, and I've been to all of them, but I've been to two or three of the Jamesport.
Go ahead, three, I think.
Representatives of Greenwood there, and I being the mayor, and John as the chairman's there. So that, those meetings, unless somebody has a third party to decide what is fair price for us buying water rights, that will never change. If we either agree to what the asking price is, I'm going, I'm going to the bigger picture for a second. If we, the city, agree with the price that has been offered to us from Jamesport, we are moving on, we're done.
We've never had a.
But, wait a second, I'm sorry, that's okay. So it's either that, or if we don't, if we don't agree with that price, which I agree is high, I don't know that much about it, but I think it's a high price, according to what they did for Fort Smith years ago. So either we, either we go back to the board and say, we'll pay your asking fee, or we bring in a third party to, if that works, I don't know if, I don't know, talking about natural resources, or somebody that, that may can help and say, here is what's fair, and I think that exists, I think that, that, but I've been to those meetings and it, it doesn't get anywhere.
But, but, we've got to get, you know, the lawyers, I guess, involved in this, or the municipality, or somebody. You know, for years, we, we hear about, you know, some years back, they said, go out and stake your claim, Jamesport got ahead of everybody, and put your business surf, and file it with whoever you file it with, and said, this is mine. Well, then we hear, well, that doesn't mean anything, that really doesn't mean anything, we can do that.
I'm sorry.
Can you, can you? You know, when Andy goes out there and says, okay, I'll take this business in, I need water.
He shouldn't be involved in, he shouldn't be in the middle of this.
Absolutely not, unfortunately.
We still don't know the answer. I said, he, he's kind of obviously become the media between us and Jamesport.
I, I think a simple question to be answered, and whether it's, I don't like going, or whatever, is, if, and unfortunately, Donnie, Donnie is, runs the business out there, but there is a board of directors, just like there's a city council here that makes those decisions. I would like for Mr. Angeloni to have a, I would rather hear them say, if Greenwood is, when we go onto the highway and we're over there, that they will be okay, what that means. that they will be okay, what that means for us selling him water and be done with it. We give him, he gives us easement, we move on down the road literally. But I, I'm afraid for him, if that's what they're, if they're saying, we don't, I'm paraphrasing, we don't care if they come over here or not. We're not going to let them, talking about us, sell him water. I don't get that, so I would like to ask that question of James Fort.
I was just wondering if we would have to power indoor water from James Fort for the backstretch?
Probably.
If, if it's in, in both their territories, Tim, you may want to chime in here some point, I, I don't know.
Well, why did, uh, James Fort go down into Scott County?
Why?
Yeah.
They were asked by people down in Scott County and they elected to do it.
But they, that wasn't the original's, uh, territory.
Right, you know, a county gave them area, a different county gave them a new area than that county.
And so they were, I'm sorry, I think they had permission to do it.
Right.
My, I'm just.
I think I don't know.
I just love that thing else, they said, hey, you know, we have to seize off the main surface, we got to lay the hops in the ground in order to claim it.
Right.
We, we got a gentleman on the face parker here in the city limits. He comes in, he paints his, he paints a path, we shoot across the road, we put in the fire hydrant, we serve it for free. What's going to happen if we do it?
James Fort will probably sue you and we'll wind up in litigation like City Forest did for years. And then they came to some real complicated resolution. We've already had this discussion, I don't have any time.
Ford spent, ended up paying him $5 million for so many customers and 12,000 acres. And that was in 2003 deals. Yeah, well, yeah, included a lot for him.
I spent about, today with Jerry Campfield, he told me a lot, he, he provided me as much information as he could. And I provided that to the water commission.
As far as prices, the only price we've ever been given is, we've never been given a price on, on your area, sorry, an area down there. The price, we were given two prices, one was for just Jacob Burton's property, it's 2000 acre. And another was for Jacob Burton and about 140 some odd more acres or 45 just enclosures, and that was over 40,000. And, um, we had spent probably between half a million and a million on infrastructure once we bought, you know, 180 acres. Um, but we've never actually got a price on this area. So in theory, for Andy, we give him an easement across our property to Mount Zion Road, and he gets water from James Fort.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
If they're willing to.
If the gas company.
If the gas company allows that to be in that easement.
If James Fort allows them to.
And if James Fort.
We can create a new easement.
He can come on our property.
They'll let me tie on over there on.
On that area?
Oh, yeah.
So, so really, I mean, in essence, I went out there and looked at it the other day, by the way, there was another gentleman that's not pleased with the stakes, and you already know that. Where those stakes are from your, from your survey, but that's another topic, I'll take that, you know, I don't know. I, I don't know why, if, if, if you're okay getting James Fort and they allow it, just, I, I'm, it's not my decision to come over on our property, forget the gas easement, and come over on the property, on the city's property and get your easement there, and on over there.
There's still an ordinance, and I'm going to need some help, because the girls in office are supposed to collect this money. There's an ordinance, the record fee was passed by the council, by the commission and the council for 20,000. I thought we'd made a stack, I know originally the way we intended it, and Sonny made a comment, well, we don't, come, they're going to have to pay more for police cars stuff, but we didn't make an ordinance for police cars, we actually made an ordinance to do a recoup fee.
But he's not hooking you up to it.
I, it, it doesn't matter, we have half a million dollars investment getting that fire hydrant there. And it's not my idea, I'm just saying, at the time, the water commission was directed to go on that route to make a recoup fee. And it's a little bit of dicey, and the only intent and the reason it was attached to the building permit was because we knew that there were going to be places that we were going to make them eligible, that we were going to enhance property values, but we may not be able to sell water to, so the only way that we could recoup the monies was to attach it to the building permit. Because we knew they may buy our wastewater if, if it's there, they may not buy our, our, our water. And they. It's for a water and sewer connection though, Tim. Well, no, sewer connections, the water exists in the building permit.
Okay, I have the ordinance in my hand and you all do.
Yeah.
And, and forgive us, Mr.
Sorry.
This gets deeper and deeper. This ordinance, I read this ordinance a little different than what some of the other people in this room read. Because there's a comma there, and I'm just going to read what it says. From state to date, the ordinance for any building permit issued within the defined area should be assessed a recoup fee of $20,000 for water, common. And $20,000 for each sewer connection if you paid water and sewer apartments. To me, the comma means those are both included and they're both connections. Now, not everybody agrees with that, but that's how I read it. So, but, but the point is, if we did, if we did what we were talking about a minute ago, you would not be getting our water, you'd be getting, we'd be giving you an easement, if you will, across our property for, for whatever reason, for whatever, which side, and then you'd be hooking to James Fort.
I read that you've got a $20,000 fee for connection to our water.
That's what I just, that's what I said.
To our.
I mean, I'm not saying.
I read it different.
But John reads it different.
Yeah. But he's not asking for a connection to our waters.
Exactly.
But it's for, we providing fire suppression lines over there.
Fire suppression lines are not an issue, John, that is a state law that says we have to provide it. Now, you've got a city ordinance and a state law, which do you think is the, is takes.
We have a city ordinance, state law says we have to run a fire hydrant over this place?
The state, the state law says.
That our expense?
We have to provide fire protection, period.
We can do that without providing a hydrant.
Exactly, right there.
Andy doesn't have to pay $20,000, the way I read it.
That's the way I read it, that's been my.
If he's not going to give us the water?
But, but, you know, commercial property, they have to have, you know, a hydrant, a commercial property.
I mean, I don't, I think it's ludicrous to think that he would have to pay $20,000 and not get some water.
Oh, yeah.
So, so for a commercial property, they have to have a hydrant.
Well, according to our, to the state law, if we annex that property in, we say that we are going to provide fire protection. If that includes a, uh, fire hydrant, so be it, that's the, that's, that's what we have to do, that's what we're looking at.
Our commercial guidelines say, well, the fire hydrant, fire hydrants have to be over 300 feet.
I know, I'm talking about state law. And so, so we're talking about annexing everything from one end of this place to the other. That comes with the, the, uh, burden of providing fire protection and police protection. If that means that, that we'll have to put on two more patrolmen, that's what we have said, we guarantee. If it says that we're going to provide fire protection, whether it's a hydrant or, or, or tanker truck, that's what we said that we guarantee, that is the minimum requirement for any annexation.
You're probably holding on this.
That's what I've been telling you, that we should, we need to look at how we're going to handle this, how it's going to affect our ISO. Do we have the money to start extending fire, uh, uh, hydrants out? I don't know. If we don't, then what are we going to look at? I mean, that's your guys, you know what I'm saying, I don't. You know, and I just want to caution you on that, because we sign a, when we, when we do the ordinance of annexation, it goes to the state. And the state says minimum requirement, fire and police protection. We could say we're going to put in paint roads, we're going to do sewer, we're going to do all this, and we have five years to do it. But on day one, we have to provide fire and police protection.
Could I have, but ask a question? Which we have.
Yes.
Which we will have.
Yep.
I, I'm just going to have a question. Any connection, we're going to have police and fire.
With the hydrant, is that?
No.
No.
Day one, right now tomorrow, we can provide police and fire protection for his property.
He already did.
It's done tomorrow, it's in city limits.
Right now, day, we can do that.
He's got fire protection.
We are, yeah. Not with suggestions.
He's got police.
I don't understand.
But according to commercial guidelines with the state.
That's what he builds a new building, that's why it comes in, you have to have. Existing stuff, yeah, we can protect with mutual aid tankers, because we don't have tankers.
Right.
But some brand new comes in, we either got to go buy tankers or put in fire hydrants.
Does the commercial code say you have, the commercial link has to have?
State, state code.
State code, uh, uh, fire hydrant.
Tells you have to have.
See, we annexed this vacant land, don't have to typically.
We're going to end this conversation.
Exactly. So, we're saying, to be under commercial code, a hydrant, hydrant has to be there.
Typically, the developer will put that in.
Yes. And that's why we have two separate things here, $20,000 for water path and $20,000.
No, water path for, yeah. Well, for a water connection, I agree, you've got a water connection and a sewer connection, two separate issues.
I'm like, if, if, if we're getting down to, you know, drawing all these straight narrow lines, I'm sure, if I'm going to have to pay $10,000, $10,000 for any kind of path to get some water over there back for a fire hydrant, I might have city water.
Right.
But like, if we keep going back, we've not fixed the problem yet. We can hash this out all we want.
We've got to get this resolved.
We've got to fix the headwind between James Fort Water and the city Greenwood. And if that means getting somebody else to talk to them of another figure, then.
I'm all for that. I've said this more than once.
We want to get this road on the 71 corridor. Here's a guy that wants to go out here and open business. And we're saying, when you build your building, you're going to have to pay us $20,000 to connect a fire hydrant.
Is that 10 years ago before the.
Kind of a big.
We were getting a landline crap over there.
I'd say, it's, it's, there, there's no cops in the area.
None of ours. None of ours.
And none of, of James Fort.
Not very close, no.
Not very close, so I'm saying that we have intent to, to go under 71, and I'd say that we supply water and sewer, and then, you know, and then if, uh, if James Fort comes back and, you know, says, hey, you know, uh, you're in our territory, to now to say, you know, where, where does it really say that? Where is the state map? It says that it's a hand drawn map that, that James Fort comes.
I've got a survey map that James Fort paid for, it's done by Mark Cook, their engineer, I, I, I can get that, but, I mean, I don't know if the county's ever approved that officially, I don't know. I mean, that's the first question, is that had, does that hold any water at all?
Yeah.
Pardon me.
Well, I've got a map, I've got a map that, uh, that the National Resource sent me, and it shows that area out there around Burton's property as being no man's land. So we've got different maps that are, that are confusing. And, uh, you know, that, that adds to the, the confusion.
The whole water rights deal was vague, the attorney general made that comment, this law, the red vague, we tried to annex all of the stuff down over. And there was a deal in the book that said that the, the, the water rights for a certain area is such a gray area that, I mean, I guess Ford Smith made the process.
And Tim can address to that, because he was right in the middle of, of that on the law mark.
But, but I have a question, and it's going to need clarification as from, as we go this day forward. Because I can tell you with 100% certainty that the intent was to attach a recoup fee, whether you use our water or not. I don't care if we charge the guy, I don't make a commission off this or not. That's, I'm not in the money end of it, but I have to enforce the ordinance.
Tim, have you noticed? I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's, it's a little bit, how do I know?
So, yeah, that, that that was in, that the survey.
Because I helped, I, I, I gave Steve Redd that advice, but he started drafting this, and I also pointed it out. And when he put each water and sewer connection, what he meant is that you had four or five parcels. And I pointed that out to him, he said, no, I want them to pay for every one of them, each and every one, so he put the word each in there. And connection.
Connection.
Yeah. Or sewer connection, the water connection is all separate. And I, if you could go back to some development, some of the meetings, I told the council, I told the commission, that, that it was going to be attached to the building permit, because that was the only certain way to be sure and collect the money. In other words, we're making the investment, we're enhancing the property, we're putting the infrastructure in. Now, I'm, you know, I'm not trying to dissuade this one way or the other, I just have clarification.
Gentlemen, please, just, we got one talking, please, go ahead.
I just need clarification from our attorney and from this body, that do we or do we not charge it from this point forward, or do we need to correct it?
I, I think there's a little bit, and I don't, and I don't know if Mr. Hammy needs to decide for us or, or what, but I, and I'm, and I'm just the mayor, I don't mean that sarcastically, but the, the connection, I, I would hate to think that we're charging somebody $20,000 to have. Because the word connected, the word connection is not connected to both the water and sewer in this work, it looks like it's, but to me, that kind of means you're talking about both of it, that's just my interpretation of it. But to think that we're going to charge somebody $20,000 just to add a hydrant, without a connect, because you're not connected to the hydrant, am I right? Hydrant's just there, that's the fire trouble.
It's an infrastructure.
I, I get infrastructure, and also, and also get that we improve people's property. I don't, I don't even, to me, that's part of doing, being a growing city, is that you're out there putting infrastructure, and yeah, you're going to improve somebody's property. That's part of being in the business, and part of being a city, but, uh.
A precedent has already been made.
Sorry.
A precedent has already been made. When we extended water out there to tractor supply.
They paid most of it.
They paid, but then also any other part, after that 90 day, or whatever it was, moratorium, say that you're going to have to have a, a path, you know, to recoup flexible.
We're not the guy that started the building, many storage.
Yes.
So if, if we're going to improve something else, the guy.
We did not get able to cut range, so.
But you also have the ability by the same ordinance to charge whatever you want to charge, you can charge $50,000 if you want to. That, that last item in this ordinance, when I, when I got passed and I signed it, I thought, you talk about opening up a Pandora's box. The council, with their recommendation, has the ability to go up or down, depending on whoever it is. And I thought, wow, that is, that is really asking for trouble. You can charge, you can charge nothing, or you can charge $100,000 if you want to.
Would you like to sign in there?
Contract.
I, I didn't like signing it, because you got to vote it in.
This is a contract.
That's not, that's not how that works. The council, the council.
Sure, it was spinning.
But, but that, that'll mean I have to agree with it.
Okay.
I'm just making a statement.
It's actually not a bad thing that that's in there.
If you're, if you're trying to grow the city, and you have these people like Mr. Angelo coming in trying to do business, and you're tractor supplying, I give $20,000. But if you're him, or Mr. Smith, or Mr. anybody else that is a small town business guy, I don't, I don't get it. But, but again, I did sign, you're right, it's the law.
Uh, John Deere to put a big factory in here, we'll waive that zero, but you're connected to get that business out there.
But why would, okay, that's a good point, I do, I do understand that, but yet, we didn't waive tractor supply. I do is, I mean, so you waived it for the big people that bring you money, you see what I'm saying?
$30,000, yeah, we'll waive it, property taxes, rent taxes.
We, we have yet, we have yet to do that, though, we don't really look to do that sort of thing. We really are more about putting something in place to get as much money out of that developer as we can. That's a tough spot to be.
But I think, you know, to Tim's point, I think if Walmart would have come in and said, we want to put a Walmart right here. And Posey says, you owe me $20,000, and they said, yeah, but I'll put in a Walmart. And here's the figures on what you're going to get for city sales back.
I'm all for waiving.
We would go, uh, waive that. Right?
It's okay to pick and choose.
We said that anyways.
But let me, let me, let me ask.
I, I like to pick, I don't like picking and choosing, that's not my point, exactly, because to me, the smaller gap deserves a break, just as much as the big, the gap's going to bring in. He's not, by the way, and, and I don't know if he wants to dispose this or not, but that's a small business, but that's going to bring in some rent, and it's compared to.
I'll tell you, my, my partner Trey, a lot of them don't trade in Killeen. He's down in Louisiana, he, he started this equipment rental business down there, $300,000 worth of equipment, seven years ago, or almost seven. So last year, in, in his sixth year, he made or ran 4.6 million dollars through that equipment rental store. He has about $15 million worth of equipment that he has bought. He employs about 20 people, and he, it's a pretty good business. He's in his seventh year. We're going to start out here with $1.5 million worth of equipment, so we're about five times more ahead of the game than he was when he started. So, I mean, I'm not, I can't tell you in five years where we'll be making this amount of money, but I mean, our projection is in three years, over $2 million a year, which will bring revenue into this, into taxing to the city. I'll be hiring some people, you know, and, uh.
So there you go, do you, do you base that, and, and by the way, this, this, and I apologize, I get, I get emotional with this stuff too. So there you go, do you, do you base that, and, and by the way, this, this, and I apologize, I get, I get emotional with this stuff too, we, we, believe it or not. We, we try to grow this city as much as we possibly can, we get calls sometimes, and we make calls, Danielle, my assistant called up Kroger, and they said, well, can you come to Greenwood? We haven't heard an answer yet, but, but things like that go on all the time, and, and the first thing they wanna know, they didn't ask her, what incentives do you have? What are you gonna do for us? And so it ought to be looked at for the little guy, and I don't mean to call you little, because that's, that's not little, that's, that's heavy.
I understand, it's a small business.
So it's a, it's a rock and hard place, unfortunately, we're discussing a lot of things that need to be done in a, in a study session, and certainly, set down with James Fork. I think you said it really a while ago, until we get on the same page, even the annexation is something we oughta kinda slow down and go, we gotta get our, we gotta get our act together, everybody, you know, we don't all have to agree. But we definitely gotta know what we're gonna have to offer when we annex, annex according to it.
Well, we need to, you know, we need to, all, all of us in this room need to understand, I mean, we've got two or three interpretations of this one, of this piece of paper.
Yep.
Right now, in this room.
Yep.
And.
We've got two or three interpretations, since we put the lines in the ground out there, we can't provide any water, is that, who says we can't?
It seems to me, tell me.
I need somebody, I need somebody, Mike, somebody, somebody needs to bring something here and sit down and say, you can't give him water, and if we do, well, you're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna be able to do that.
That's what I'm saying.
It's a gray area of the law.
So put water underneath, underneath seventy-one, run the lines, and then when Monty comes in over in about six miles, like, he's got water, nobody will worry about it.
The water that goes under seventy-one, does it just stop right at that corner, or are you going up one way and going up?
We're gonna come across seventy-one, get out of the, out of the, uh, state highway, right way, and a few feet out of that right way for the water hydrant, all day.
And that's it?
Yeah.
And then from there, you can go on wearing it.
Right.
A little while ago, Mr. Angeloni asked if we need to get his permit, and according to the way that I read the, the ordinance. And if he gets water from James Fork, and we give him an easement over there, and then we, you know, get your architectural plans approved, you can get a permit. According to the way I read that ordinance, if you get water from James Fork, I'm not gonna charge you twenty thousand dollars. Now, unless these people tell me to do something different, but when I read that ordinance, and I looked at your situation, and I told the mayor, mayor, the way I read this is it's ten thousand dollars for a connection of water, ten thousand for sewer. He's not, he's gonna be on Septic, he's gonna be James Fork Water, so that's off the table, the fire protection is covered by the annexation. So again, if, if you, you know, when we get the architectural drawings, and they go through the department heads, and everybody signs off on them, at that point, you can get a permit.
Okay.
Unless they can tell me something different.
I wanna clarify something, I, I completely agree with what Sonny just said. Andy goes and builds a building, it's commercial, whatever, we're calling it. So Stewart says there's this state code that requires fire hydrants for commercial zones. Is that Andy's problem, or is that Stewart's problem?
Well, the, the fire.
Andy's not asking for a connection.
About the city.
Fire hydrant's gonna be there.
The fire hydrant was already proposed.
Won't even be close.
The fire hydrant was already planned.
You're saying you're gonna put it, it won't even be close, according to state code, when he comes in for my approval, I'll say you're gonna have to put a hydrant accessible to the fire truck. Off the side of you, of the state, of the, of the US seventy-one is not accessible to the fire truck, so we're gonna have to be able to pull off the road and access that fire hydrant. The only place to do that is gonna be at his front drive, and so there's gonna have to be a hydrant sitting at his drive, where it connects the fire department.
So why are we, but.
That's where it's gonna have to be.
Why are we?
We recently found a hydrant down from Denver slash, uh, once it went across Mount Zion. And we were coming, coming down right there at the, at the road intersection, the state may have, they didn't like us coming down that location, for some reason, they made us move further back. So originally, we wanted to put the fire hydrant right there at the, here's, posted here, section of seventy-one and Zion, we've, you've been accessible to the Mount Zion, you know, get to it and tempted off the road.
Yeah, which obviously wouldn't help any, but.
But they're moving it down now, correct? You're moving it down towards my property, correct?
Yeah, so they just do that.
It's going, isn't it going to your drive, or?
It's in three hundred feet.
We kinda share a driveway, did we not?
Yes, and, and by the way, about that driveway, I'm getting bids on thirty-five feet, six and a half, six inch concrete with, uh, big wings on it, a nice driveway going in that place.
Yes.
If they're able to, uh, if they're gonna, if they're not coming across at the intersection of Mount Zion and seventy-one, Denver, like we were talking before all this started happening. And they're gonna move it down to that section, which that'll end up ending on us when we build the fire station to try to get water lines all the way down to the fire station, so you're increasing that cost, another, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars? Um, so don't get mad at me when that happens, uh, anyway, if there's a, if there's a hydrant here that comes across, as long as it's within, was accessible to the fire truck, or we don't stop on seventy-one, and we can pull off. And right there by his property, then that's fine.
Okay, so if, if the hydrant is going where I understand it's going, is it on, is it on our property side of the driveway, or his side?
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be on our side, supposedly.
So without knowing exactly where your building is, I don't know if that shows it or not.
Yeah, you'll be.
So that's, so that, that fixes that, correct?
It should be, as long as it's accessible to the truck, or we can pull off.
Well, accessible is, is you pulling off on your.
Accessible is where we can get pulled off, not off pavement, period, we have to.
No, you're only, you're only driveway, I mean, you're only driveway that he just described, right?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, it's, I mean, there's an easement to there, fifty feet, it's gonna go all the way through.
You're, you're building this nice big concrete drive, that's where we go to hook up to that hydrant by the fire.
I understand it wasn't gonna be there originally, but that's where they're planning.
You're coming earlier, we're about to be in it by Mount Zion.
Yeah.
I can see your point there, so.
We'll say, if it was gonna go up Mount Zion, and you're still looking at, uh.
But nothing about this, this commercial guidelines, fire suppression, blah, 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 compels Andy in any way to buy a connection from the city.
That's the way I read it, right?
I don't think so.
No, not if it doesn't have to connect.
If the main, the main supply line would come in across seventy-one, is it gonna be at Denver and then Mount Zion?
No, it, it starts, it's probably right down there near his property.
That's what we're talking, we do a lot of it, we do a lot of it.
Right, right.
You both have Pandora's.
So when we, so that, so when we come south with the lines for the fire station, that bitch is gonna be there, we're gonna have short hydrants, and everybody, it's supposed to be, that's all gonna be commercial, correct?
To meet, to meet the building, that's, you're correct.
So there'd be a, so, so the hydrant that is gonna be there shortly, one of these days, hopefully soon, by the driveway, as we go south toward the station. Put them from there between there and the corner of Mount Zion.
I'm just making sure that's the way it was, I'm getting in my mind.
What water are you taking to the firehouse? It's gonna be taken over or supplied.
But I'm just saying that, but when you start developing that, our commercial guidelines are building, fire hydrant has to be over three feet, you go down sewer stretch, and spur. Start delivery drive, and let the fire hydrant, let the trucks flow.
Unless we give our bigger picture answer about whose area that is, I think the answer to your question is, when he turns the faucet on, the new fire station's gonna be James Fork, and the hydrant, that Greenwood water.
Correct. Cause it'll have to be, if it's a full blown station, and it has to be sprinkled with living quarters, then it'll have to be, our, it'll have to hook it up to the, to the city.
The rainwater will be city water, and the shower.
You'll want a hydrant there, you'll want a hydrant there to be able to fill the trucks up off of, cause I'm gonna have to pay James Fork for their water.
It's all James Fork's.
Yep, the one we, one we sold.
That's the best one.
That's the best one.
And you got more.
I totally, he's very excited when he told me, the council, I said, you won't be so excited.
James Fork water and Greenwood service.
So, yeah. To recap.
Yes. That's not true.
That's wrong.
That'll be a while.
Yes.
You will grant an easement to go across your property, somewhere.
Will you grant, will you grant an easement to come across yours?
Yeah.
You've shot the fair trade to me, as long as the gas company, I mean, don't have a problem.
But now, here's the other deal, there is a, there's a telephone line that's an easement from James Fork right across, so if I can't use the gas, can I go right next to that? Can I get easement right underneath that pole? I mean, it's, you can't build anything there anyway.
Are you, is your mind or their mind?
Cause we're gonna build a building where that pole is.
Where what pole?
That pole right in the middle, we're gonna, we'll have to move all that, that's where our train is gonna be.
We need to, that's where I'm getting my.
That's yet to be determined.
Yeah, it'll be.
Exactly, where this is.
No, there's a, no, it can't work.
Okay.
I don't think you can make his decision based on what, what we want, I mean, that's.
There's a pole in the middle.
I'm not saying it's gonna be determined. I think we need providing water and sewer.
I do too. Sewer's not gonna be anytime, anytime soon.
Okay.
But water, I mean, water should be soon.
Yeah, we're, we're across the seventy-one, you know, and to me, it's a, it's still basically a no man's land, just like it was, like you're saying, Burton's property is, there's no pot there in the ground right now. And we're in a position to get them there.
Uh, James Fork does that, lots of this property. Yes, sir.
Yes, just right there.
We gotta be, we gotta be willing to lawyer up, as our own attorney just said.
That's right.
I mean.
And Andy's gonna be stuck right in the middle of it, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
I don't mind the water deal, as long as I can get a permit, and then I would like to know how much it's gonna cost me to hook onto your water, it's gonna be comparable to James Fork, James Fork's seven hundred and fifty dollars for me to hook onto. Of course, I'll have to run that line right here, it's gonna be a couple thousand dollars, and if I can hook onto your water, run it across there, four thousand dollars, put me a tag in there, I mean.
You're talking about to go into our water on the front, on the, where we're coming across?
Yeah, I mean, when that time, when it.
Can you wait that long?
Yeah, I mean, the, as long as the city will let, the only thing I have to have is a bathroom, I can get water in a tow, for, to flush it from a hole, until we get water run across there, I mean, I can.
Actually, I don't think we can allow that.
Okay.
Cause you're, cause you're city.
Well, then I just won't have a bathroom in there until.
How will you?
Get your equipment on.
Yeah, fortified.
You guys, you're gonna have to have a.
I mean, I, I don't mean that bad, I'm just saying, you, you gotta meet these codes.
How long until we're gonna, until water's gonna be run underneath seventy-one, I mean, that's the question.
It's coming quick.
That's not an issue, we need them, next week?
No.
Ten days, two weeks, a month?
Very soon.
What is, no, seriously, what is, what is the line, I mean, I've, I've asked that a couple times myself, and I've gotten, next week.
We got permission from the state, oh, what, a month ago, finally? Yeah, the state helped us up a long time, uh, our engineer got the last details about two weeks ago, and he's, I have not got a firm, I will be there that day. We, we lost a lot of control when we took it. Yeah, when, when we put the contractor off, he had a certain timeline to build out, and when we put him off, we, we lost that control. Yeah, so we're kinda at their mercy, but I have expectations of that, and I'm pushing it very hard. Once, it actually, once they mobilize the setup, it's probably, it could be a two to three week process, and even less, it, it could, it could go off as quick as nine or ten days. Could be as long as two weeks to twenty-one days, it's a fairly quick process, it's, it's just a jack and bore going underneath the highway, and the, it's a specialized job, but it'll go fairly fast.
I just know on Mr. Angeloni's, stuck between the city and James Fork arguing this out in court, while he's trying to.
So, so, just for my feeble mind, if James Fork wasn't involved in this in any way, and he wasn't across the highway or whatever, he comes in and says, I'm buying this piece of land. Say it's in this, it's in this map, he's across the highway.
He's in the corridor.
In the corridor, that covers this ordinance. Anybody that comes in to this ordinance and says, I wanna connect to your water system, according to this ordinance, it's twenty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Unless, I guess, the last paragraph is some leeway.
With their recommendation.
All right, to do something different.
Correct.
So, you know, if he's asking for connection to our water, we wanna provide, if we want Greenwood water, then we've gotta deal with it that way. And then take our chances with whatever happens legally with James Fork.
I think that's, yeah, you, you have, you have, you have a couple choices, yeah, the choice is to, whatever you wanna call it, lawyer up, be prepared, the water under the, I mean, we're gonna put the water in there, that's not, I don't guess that's a question.
No.
We're doing, we're gonna put a hydrant there, and you are correct, and he pays whatever fee, that fee is agreed on, and be prepared to either hear from James Fork or not.
Correct.
Or allow him an easement to go over there and get James Fork water, that's the two choices, I think, the council.
Which is his best choice.
Yeah.
Financially.
Yeah.
Is the cheapest route.
And the fastest.
And the fastest is go there, pound in James Fork.
The only thing standing.
And if we somehow resolve this ongoing debate and dispute, and say, hey, now we're all got it settled.
Can you, can you?
Change it, move it to us, I guess, I don't, I mean, it's flushing a hole, it's not exactly a windfall for James Fork, I'm selling water, I mean, for either one of us. It's not, it's not this huge water customer.
It'll be more than this, it's a flushing combo, because he's got, he's got worse, uh.
Well, he's also gonna have, he's also gonna have to tell you, and figure out whether he's gonna be able to get the electric meter or gas or something. I know on our end deal, I mean, we don't wanna just start going away and, and make easements that ends up causing us problems in, in the future for wherever we do something.
That don't benefit us, we have had some benefit.
Right, we gotta get, we gotta have something out, I mean, something to benefit, I mean, as much as I'm, I mean, that's why we're in discussion, to try to, try to ease the pain and help out, but we don't wanna just start giving up easements on our end, that we're, if we come back, oh crap, we can't do that over there, because we've lost thirty foot of water, because we've sacrificed the easement, you know, that, that we might.
Yeah, my idea, or the, the other, what I threw out there, which you probably referred to as stupid, so I take all that back.
Well, I mean.
I mean, that, that doesn't make any sense to give an easement on our own personal property, not.
Well, he's, he's afraid to give us an easement.
I mean, it'd be a nice, maybe, thing to do, but we don't, we don't, we're not sure.
They got a trading of easement, from what I understand. So what, I, this, what I see here, his best option is we trade an easement, he's an, he goes to James Fork, and then we're plowing under the highway, no matter what, into this territory that we may not.
Deal, sir.
That we don't know how, I mean, that maybe the fight shouldn't be with Mr. Andy, uh, maybe the fight, uh, be over the Greenwood City Fire Department, if the case goes. City Greenwood hooked up their own fire department and water, now James Fork's too.
If we're gonna make the news, it ought to be better.
Here's an interesting concept with that, if when James Fork goes out in these other areas, anyone that has a well, has the option of buying their own water, playing by James Fork. Greenwood provide their own water like they would in a well, I mean, that's probably not a good, but, I mean, it's some argument. I don't think they care if we provide water, because it's an emergency, um, service provider, and I think that they're probably gonna be okay with that. But I wanna ask, still wanna ask Mike, are we okay with this ordinance as it is, not charging the twenty thousand dollars, or do we need to correct it and fix it? Cause I just, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna the next guy that comes in, us to be what we do.
That's up to the, that's up to the, the commission and the city council.
Is it okay as it is to not charge the?
When I look for law, you want to change it, they clarify.
But did, did we not set a precedent back there with that storage facility on, uh, Burton?
I think, I think the stor, the mini storage guy came back and said, I want the same deal he had.
But the mini storage guy, and he said, you had to.
We can do what we want to.
Yeah.
There was a great.
There is some, all of this should have to be these stores built, because it doesn't bring any revenue in, there's zero revenue. There's zero revenue for the city with a, with a storage building, bottom line.
Which I think is such a three of that ordinance, for us to adjust it, that would have been.
That was a lot of the thought process behind that.
What do you bring into the city?
Right.
Lance's point perfectly made, you're bringing a storage facility, we're not getting anything out of that.
Other than the site was so rare.
No.
But then, what, but, and he said, he's just gonna be using, you know, a, a bathroom.
I mean, he's probably gonna be the equivalent of one home.
But we make tax dollars off of this.
We're really tax dollars off of this storage building.
No, it's not such a sales tax.
No, they have to.
Which isn't how to make a deal with us, frankly, you know, if you're bringing in cracker barrels, you know, bitter cracker barrels, saying, where are the bills right there on Andy's property? We'd be thinking, you know, we saw Tom's presentation. We'd be thinking, you know, we saw Tom's presentation of the game, well, that makes that line change. What Andy's doing doesn't curve the line, like one of those businesses, I think that's why we put section three that says, this business changes the curve. Therefore, we're willing to waive this tax fee. But will it, wa, 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 waving it because Andy's a swell fellow, is not gonna hold up very well.
Maybe.
With the next.
I've, I started the gist of this twenty grand was for a water tap and for a sewer tap.
That's why I read. Sewer, sewer tap is twenty thousand on its own.
That, that's the way it reads.
Sewer tap is twenty, and the water tap is twenty, that's exactly what it was supposed to be right now, this is word grown, we need to change the wording, make it sound even better.
It's two separate.
I don't, the each over there is what the issue is, they just every two, if you have twenty thousand for water and twenty thousand for sewer connection, to be paid in water and sewer.
Because it's infrastructure, both of them are two separate pipes, they're not, you're not using the same pipe, they're two separate pipes.
We meant it to be twenty for water and twenty for sewer.
Yes.
I agree.
Yeah, because somebody come in and they, they don't have a sewer, they.
No.
There's everything.
Because we, we put the water lines in at this deal, I didn't spur, we wanted to give them cash back, one of our trouble.
Because if we don't get any cash back, we can't go any further.
All that being said, if it's a huge deal at the end of that rainbow, there's a pot of gold, we, we wanna recoup it all in jobs and taxes.
Our pot of gold.
I supply.
I'm the opposite, Mayor, you read the comma as combining them, I read the comma as separating the two.
I agree.
Well, I'm just saying, comma being that they're both twenty thousand apiece, is what I, that, that's what I meant.
Oh.
One, you're right.
Not in addition, both four twenty, that's not what I meant, I meant they're both twenty thousand dollars, for water connection, even though it doesn't say, the word that's missing is connection.
Well, twenty thousand for water, twenty thousand for sewer.
But it says sewer connect, yeah, if it said water connection, like it says sewer connection.
Crazy.
It would be, that's what you're, that's what you're agreeing on, I think, because there's twenty for each, and that's what I'm saying too.
Right, okay. I thought you were saying it.
You're saying, if he doesn't need sewer, he doesn't have to pay, that's right.
Right, yeah, exactly.
And if he doesn't need water, then he doesn't have to pay, is that?
If he's not connecting to the water, I, I say this.
Hey, I think we all agree on that.
No. John still reached.
Cause I know the guy who wrote it, and I know what was discussed, and, and the word connection does not, does not place their water for a purpose?
To try to recoup the money through the line being there in the first place.
For the fire hydrants and everything else.
Typically, I disagree with, with Sonny and the fact that we've had to provide, if you, when you build a, when you build something, you choose to build where there is no infrastructure. So, you bear the burden of providing, if, if the fire corps, if you have to put a fire hydrant, you have to put the fire hydrant, in this case, that would have been a half million dollars to, because that's what it costs us to go down.
I deal with annexation every day.
So, excuse me, I'll, I'll let you talk in just a minute, when I'm finished. When we went down to Tractor Supply, they were at the very end, and we didn't wanna make them pay for the whole thing, so we devised a scenario where each person would pay their fair share, and they attached a, a recoup fee. I'm not really for recoup fees, because they get us in this awkward situation that we're in right now, I think Greg and I both are not for recoup fees.
Do it, recoup fees.
I'm just doing what I'm asked.
Fire department, get your check looked out, and you ready to build.
But just, that's, that's how it typically works, I'm just saying, typically, developers provide the infrastructure, in this case, the city is going out and working ahead and providing the infrastructure and attached recoup fee. And I think the commission felt directed by the council to do that, and that's what we did, that was the intent, and I'm not, and again, I'm perfectly fine, however y'all choose to read it, I'm, I'm happy with it, we'll do whatever y'all ask, I just want clarification, so we know what to do. Well, I don't, I, 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 rarely do I agree with Mr. McKinney, but I agree with him on this, that, you know, all of us have paid our taxes over the years, and the city decides to go, you know. Somebody wants to come into the city, build something out there, and tie into our water system, why are we all paying for that to happen? So, I don't really have a problem with recouping the expense, I mean, that, when we built out Tortr Tractor Supply, he said, hey, we're gonna build this out here, we want all these businesses to come in here. And they're gonna help recoup the cost of getting this infrastructure out there. If it happened to be somebody that said, I'm building a hotel, and I'm gonna employ two hundred people, and bring in this hamburger tax, we've got the leeway to say, hey, that's a pretty good deal, we'd like for them to be in town, because we're gonna make a whole lot more money over the years than, than this fee, we'll waive this fee for you.
That's what I like about that ordinance, it gives you the latitude to, to move one way or the other on it, I don't have a problem with that, that ordinance there. You know, the issue that I have is the fire protection, because I deal with annexation and all that, and that is the minimum requirement that you have to provide when you annex property in, and if you don't provide it, the people that own the property can de-annex themselves.
This property is already in the city limits, so this training.
Yes, we annexed it into the city limits, and, and if we don't provide those services, uh, Mr. Angeloni could go into, and, and take us to court and de-annex.
We provide.
We, we provide that service, we've been providing that service for years. I know, that's, that's my point. But that, that service is still not even provided, we, we have a line over there or not. Exactly, that's, that's my point.
But the counter, the counterpoint is, we've made. Builders, people building single buildings, put in larger lines and fire hydrants, many times, fire, Tractor Supply had to put a fire hydrant out there, and an oversized line to provide it, and we were gonna make the people put a tank up there that fell through, I mean, there's, there's precedents on both sides, where developers and builders.
If Tractor Supply has wanted to, to get James Fork water, and it was in their area, then they could have gotten James Fork water, we wouldn't have a line out there, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the fire hydrants out there.
They wouldn't have fire protection with fire hydrants.
I know, and, and of course, that was one of the deals, was that they wanted to be within the city limits, so they could have fire protection, they didn't say that we had to have, they had to have a fire hydrant, they had to have the assurance from our fire department.
Let's move on, so we're gonna, we're not gonna charge the twenty thousand, let's move on.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's your system, but let me, let me say something about setting precedents, that's been brought up several times, if, if you're, if we're worried about setting precedents, section three doesn't work. And, and I am for looking at what the, what the tax revenue is. That's the opposite of setting, I mean, setting precedents for somebody means, but section three means you, you don't have to do that for the next guy, because that next guy is bringing in ten million dollar revenue, or he's bringing in a hundred thousand dollars. So, you can't, I mean, that, that shouldn't be part of.
Precedent was already safe, because we waived it for Mr. Lynn out there, he didn't pay twenty grand, and the next guy, we'd wait.
Right, well, he actually, yeah, he actually got in underneath, he got in, he got it done.
Before this ordinance, Sean got it bought.
Right.
I think the, I think the operative word, Mayor, in section three is equitably.
I agree, I, I, and I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, we have to have enough sense to look at that and say, hey, this is gonna bring.
But, but to say, you can't, don't do that, because you set this precedence down this road, that, that's irrelevant, because you have the ability to set a new precedence, that's what that is, that's what.
It's our, our issue.
At, at your, at, at their, at your discretion, by recommendation from the, uh, water commission.
Well, I can guarantee one thing, the business agreement to come in here, wants to settle in Greenwood, Arkansas, and the water commission doesn't wanna waive something, they will get a word on those.
Sure, I see, I will see, and I don't mean that either way, I think that's a.
I thought we were making concessions of doing it, you know, half, half off, you know, you're charging ten thousand.
Since this is my.
Well, yeah, right, exactly.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we could do this all night, y'all know that, we've been, we've been here many, many, many hours, doing the same thing. We just need to clarify where we're at, that's why I put this discussion here with, with Mr. Angeloni, because he was in between a rock and a hard place, so my understanding is, he's gonna need to give with James Fork, we're gonna, we're gonna allow him to have a building for him.
Yes, he, he's going through the process, he gets architectural drawn, rough, and then we'll have the department head meeting and all that, but.
And that's, and that's, all that waved off, and then.
That's a clear shot there.
His water issue is gonna have to be taken out unless he's willing to just totally tally to go to battle with the rest of us, from what I, I mean, you know what I'm saying, if we get, put more water in the hill, he wants to tie on.
He needs to get something up right, he just said they don't want to provide it.
If you, if you.
If they don't provide.
They, they want, they, they'll provide him, it's just he has no way to get it to his place.
Unless I get an easement, and.
Unless he gets an easement.
But we're, I can get an easement on your property, and you can have an easement on my property, and.
We just need to define where those easements are.
Yeah.
We need to work together to find where.
Yeah, we need to tell him what easement we want, he needs to tell us what easement he wants from us, and we need to make sure it's not been conflict with the fire department, where your fire department building goes.
Well, I think on the easement would be where the gas line is, I, the gas company, I'll, I'll call them again tomorrow, I talked to them a week and a half ago, and they were supposed to talk to their people in Dallas, but I'll talk to them, and then, I guess, let you know.
So, you're, you are, you have been in touch with the gas company, you're waiting on, on a answer from them, whether they will allow you to go in their easement, their gas easement?
Well, and I, I don't really think that it's up to them, I think it's up to you.
Well, I mean, but, but I think, I, I agree, I think we still, I think we would have to agree also, but I think.
It'll use a mind to cross it parallel.
Mike, does the gas easement, I'm not an easement guy, does the gas company that owns this easement, I mean, they're gonna have to get permission, and then, and then we.
If they own the easement, if they own that easement, does the battery crosses us, right? If they own the.
As long as it stays at the east.
You mean, would he need our permission, is that what?
Right.
I don't.
Will you ask somebody who owns that easement?
I mean, I think everybody's here willing to give it to us.
No, I would.
Then you're gonna go. Now, I don't see anybody, I think we're all okay giving you that, right, if, if it came to us.
Quick report.
There you go.
Yep.
There you go.
Now, that's to get you to James Fork water.
Yeah, but the way I understood it, I talked to a couple lawyers, and they told me that, just because they have it, that's not a utility easement, that is just for the gas line, therefore, the gas company cannot give me permission to run a water line.
Oh, because it is solely a gas.
Exactly.
That's what you were.
You can give me permission to run water through there, because it's, it's not a utility easement, it's just for the gas line.
I, I think it's safe to say, and I, I would look for a nod, head nod here, that if that's the case, if the gas company can give it to you, then we're, then we are okay with you going through that, that same easement, am I correct, to James Fork?
And then, quick report.
Yes.
And I kinda hope, I mean, the gas company drives across my property to get to their gas well.
Right.
And so, if they tell me no, I'm gonna sell, I'm putting a fence up here, and you're not gonna be able to drive to your gas well.
I would say good luck with that, but I don't. I think you might have to drive rather than do your stand. That's how, that's how, what we, we don't do that, we don't, if we had that issue.
They, they built a, a road on my property.
Right.
I, if we, if we want a water line up there, and this gentleman, you know, I'm sorry, I almost said your last name, Andy, okay, and, and he decides to tackle our, you know, get water from us, and then James Fork comes, this is way, no, that's, that, you know, you're gonna get injunctioned, that, that doesn't mean his water stops, we have to, we don't have to turn off the waters, because, you know, James Fork, you know, puts an injunction on us, right?
Yeah, that's what it would mean, they give an injunction, that tells you you can't provide water.
But I mean, that, I mean, you still, you still have to go, uh, an injunction means that you have to go to, to court to, to, I mean, they have to sign an injunction.
But you barred from providing water, is what I mean.
Yes, they're also.
You go to James Fork.
Yeah.
Yeah. We just pray they don't provide it.
Unless James Fork is, since they.
They put it right.
I would be not, I would, you go to James Fork, and they, they write, you provide your water, which they said they will, but you gotta get an easement, but if they say they don't wanna provide the water, yeah, it'd be really nice if you get that right, and that's part where Judge Parker was getting his.
Yeah, that vote was to, for him to obtain a release, that's why the condition.
Part of.
Yeah. If I get an easement to cross it off, then I can't let him do, we'll put me a tap in there tomorrow.
Let's do it.
Let's do the thing they're doing.
Oh, I, I agree.
Yeah, let's do it.
And then.
Go forward.
Whenever, and then we'll decide on the easement, where you need it.
New thing.
Okay, yeah, Greg, Tim, you figure out, you tell them what he's gonna need.
At least twenty foot, probably.
So. So, I, I'm seeing that it's, I mean, it's, it's something you're writing for us.
We need to get that properly.
You're, you're asking.
From the water commission, was that he obtain a release on James Fork, and then.
But that's if we're providing it.
Right.
Right.
And you're not, that's not where we're headed.
Right.
Yeah, I know, it's hard, yeah.
So, I've got that, I've got all that survey, so I need to get them to write an easement up, across that property, correct?
Yeah, with those legal discriminations.
Yes, I had a survey last.
We'll have to vote to grant that easement, right?
That's correct.
But I wanna see, make sure how it affects the, the fire department there, I, I don't, I don't see the.
Well, that's why we bring it here.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
This is two minutes.
We've got another hour. This is the fourteenth.
Oh, now it's. So, this council, this easement, sorry, this, 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 the council will need to be aware, I mean, I'm not trying to hide anything, but does it have to come back to a council meeting to approve an easement, because we, we do those all the time, on trail or something, or, or whatever.
That's up to council, normally.
I mean, I'm just trying to save time.
Normally, you don't know where these ones can go, and we'll kind of look at it, but, but I think you go.
It's gonna be eaten in two weeks, right, or, or, or three weeks?
Yeah, we'll, we're gonna talk about that special, there's gonna be a special.
Yeah, that's true.
The lawn.
I, I wanna reiterate something, and, and I may hurt some feelings, but I'm, I'm, I'm in trouble sleeping, so, I don't know where the problem lies with us and James Fork, as far as the lack of communication, but we gotta fix it, and I'm asking you, so what are we gonna do, if these guys can't get along with James Fork, then we need to find somebody to keep it. I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that seems to be our problem, we're butting heads, and we're not on the same page, and we're all growing in, and we're all dead percent across table, and come to some kind of agreement on this, because I, I just don't see that not being, uh, fixable. Why we can't come to a mount, a dollar mount for, even getting that purchase for that out there, for the water rights, that's what we gotta have to grow, because we can't keep this up as we.
Especially given the fact that we're buying a lot of water from James, I mean, you're kind of.
Exactly.
We're creating a loop, we're buying water from you and feeding it right back to us, that is certainly something you would.
Brought up.
Brought up and heard upon, we are your biggest customer, yet you are, believe me, that was said.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I can do that, and also, I could say too, that on behalf of Mr. Angeloni, I think it's important, and I think, I think John was gonna say, well, you know, we've not asked about the price of that pro, I mean, of that area, we've always been bargaining or. We hadn't, we hadn't haggled in a long time, but the only thing we've ever been talking about was Jeff, was Jacob Burton's property, and that other hundred and sixty acre water was, we've not approached them about that property.
I think James Fork's got an idea of this.
Oh, wait, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying they're gonna change it.
And so, they're not willing to budge off of that.
It could be higher.
And so, and so, that.
But we gotta ask ourselves, the city, whether we wanna do, we wanna move forward, when we have those revenues, I mean, that, no matter how much water you're using, it's still revenue coming in. I mean, that, that bucks, five bucks.
Well, I agree, but I'm just saying that, you know, we're never gonna, I don't think we're ever gonna kind of compromise this, you know, uh, with James Fork, it's gonna be like the Fort Smith, what Fort Smith had to do.
But we have this contract with James Fork that expires when?
Twenty twenty, no, twenty thirty, it's here, twenty thirty, uh, twenty thirty, March, March, March or April twenty thirty.
What we're trying to do is build this coalition with James Fork, for the city of Greenwood, the more that we can grow the city, the more that we can grow our water customers, the more beneficial it is to James Fork, because we're buying from you, and if we want that contract to extend beyond that ten years. We gotta work together, otherwise, we need to be working on plan B, we are working on, or C or D, we've already met. We are working on C or D, we've already met with them.
Yeah.
You know.
James Fork's gotta know we gotta have a plan, that we have.
It's not a plan there.
Or else they they got us.
I agree, they know that we.
Andy, you understand where you're at on this deal?
I think we're gonna get an easement and I'm gonna look on the James Fork water and then we're gonna get an easement for you guys to come across my property.
Right.
We should be happy.
Then we're gonna work on for him.
And someday in the future, we'd love for you to come back to us.
But I need to.
Yes, sir, chief.
While you're talking to James Fork, find out what it's gonna cost for us to buy the water lines for the fire station.
I'd rather not take them just yet.
We might be able to do it for both of us where he doesn't have to go through there and build another one, he can just hook us to the side. They're going right across here, it's about three weeks.
They may give that to you, I wouldn't try to buy it until they turn it down.
I mean, you're getting ready to, getting ready to put a hydrant right in his front yard.
We can bring that.
And he's gonna be trying to hook up some.
What was the issue with the Almerod, at the end of Almerod?
James Fork's district.
Yeah, at the end of Almerod, they said, they didn't run across here to there, but then they said that they'd allow us to to run water up Almerod if we wanted to, right? James Fork, at the end of Almerod, they said if we wanted to do it, we could say, go ahead and have that.
Well, that's technically our service area and and once upon a time, they were gonna provide water and they asked for, they asked us for a release and we gave them a release because we had no intention of going there. And they gave us permission to cross their lines and to go into their territory and and when things were different years ago, we had, when Wayne was still in and he's the one that provided us that, the ability to serve tractor supply, I don't know that they necessarily meant for us to serve those in between, but, uh, you know, we've tried diligently, I know the mayor's been having a meeting with James Fork. Um, they just have an area that they wanna sell, a scenario that we're not really interested in to go with all of it too, but, um, you know, we welcome any help, any input because it's it's kind of, you just pay that price, that's their asking price, and it really needs to be arbitrated by a third party, someone needs to evaluate it other than us, other than us, in my opinion.
But I don't wanna go on, I don't just keep going on politics. The dread loading, again, I ain't asking you, do you know what you need?
So I need to talk with, I need to get with the gas company, make sure they're good with me going through that easement. If they're good with me going through that easement, I'll get you and let you know, I'll get, uh, Saturday people to survey that, I'll get them to draw and write it up, they told me they don't how to do that. And then I'll bring it to you and get signed, is that correct?
I'll agree, they won't, they won't, the council wants to see it, so we'll let them, and we can do that, we can, I can call a special meeting to to take a right, you know, because they kinda, they wanna see that.
In the meantime, all well, all this is taking. To to get done. If I get all my paperwork to him for the building, can I get my building permit so I can go ahead and get started, get it ordered, because I can, I really don't wanna get, it's five weeks out from the time I order it till it's, it'll be built and then.
Sorry, I want you to, do we see a problem with that?
Well, like I said.
Per ordance?
We're gonna get water on way to the other.
Per per anything else?
Build the building, we require.
Permit, you know, well, the 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 design and everything else will have to go through the process, you know, we can do that, uh, you know, and in a short amount of time, as soon as we get an architectural, uh, drawing.
Right.
Should we have even a day or two, I talked to Gary.
Drawing, it probably was good, but it's not the architectural drawing because it's commercial and and the value, so, so, you know, the, uh, that that shouldn't be a an issue. And so, once that's done, again, you you're not connecting the water sewer, then as far as my department's concerned, you, if you permit, you can get started.
That's great. I'm clear with everything here.
How long does it take to go through fire code?
Problem with that is, state fire code requires you to have fire protection before you can start construction.
Oh, rough.
Well, these don't have fire protection.
Yeah, we we.
Cause the difference between fire protection and being able to provide GPM for the product when the gas, when the when the lines are not there. We have fire protection, we put a small fire out, we just can't put a big structural fire out. And and so it just depends what he's building and what size.
Yeah, I told him that two months ago.
So. But we're gonna put a hydrant over the ground where the other.
I know, but there's still, it's just like if you're building, say that big strip of buildings down here across the golf course, if they hadn't already had hydrants there, we would have required them to come in with tankers and provide their own water, uh, that we could hook up to, because we don't have that resource, we don't have tankers. And so, anyway, you still have to have fire protection, so that's part of, that's part of the state fire, guys in the county get away with it, because there's no one to enforce it, because there's no one to force the state fire, so that in the county, the only shift county fire marshal in Washington County does.
So what does all that mean, chief, what what does that mean for him and his permit?
It just means you can't put a big permanent structure in to start octane and everything until we get lines in the ground.
Till we get a hydrant up. I bet you we're done before he is.
Yeah, that's that's kinda the way I'm looking.
He's gonna call the engineer of ours and ask him what the plan.
I can make you that promise, we'll be in before he is.
Problem solved.
That's the answer to the question.
Probably got stood.
And I guess, you know, another thing that, uh, you know, I mean, say, we talked about really part of the purpose of that, you know, but it's a good, uh, scenario there. Have have we approached James Fork just about, you know, us applying water to our own fire department and Andy here?
I've heard rumors that they may be okay with it, but they're just rumors, so I don't know.
They told them, I'm, I might be speaking out of turn here, but I was calling. The only place they told me that they would allow Greenwood to hook up would be to your fire station.
So can I ask a stupid question? Did we talk to James Fork about even going under the highway? I say to, quote unquote, their area?
We've got permission from them to run fire lines a lot in a lot of their area.
If we get permission, or did we talk to them about running this hydrant under that highway, where's it going?
We have a signed letter of them allowing us to come into their territory with fire hydrants and fire protection, only not to sell taps off of. So, no, we didn't take them a drawing and say this particular line, but it's set for territory, and it's actually signed and notarized. Right, on five.
Cause I hate to think that we're spending X amount of dollars even though we got a good deal going under the highway, from what I understand, and and get over there and we get the same reaction that he got. Greenwood can go over here all they want, but they're not gonna, you're not gonna buy any water from him.
No, Donnie and I have discussed it, in fact, we've discussed it on many occasions, as long as we don't sell water, he has no problem with water lines for fire protection.
Yeah, they cannot stop us from buying fire hydrants in our city limits. They they just can't prevent us from selling water inside, going inside buildings.
Okay.
They say they can. There's no proof that they can.
Uh, there's a bunch of court cases where cities have tried to win, saying, because we provide fire, we need your area, and cities have always lost. And the defense has always been from the municipal, from the rural areas, you can provide those on your own without selling the water, and so, believe me, we can provide the fire hydrants.
And we do have, I do have a sign.
And we have a signed letter, I mean, there's there's legal precedents, plus we got a signed letter that we have fire hydrants in there.
Okay, sorry, sir. Again.
We would ask you to be true.
And and, um, I'll be the first one to come running something for you, whether it is here or not.
Yeah.
All right. I'll hold you to that.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it.
Let let us know, and I will promise you, and Sonny's already said, whatever, we won't cut corners on your, on his area, but we will expedite as fast as we can to get you where you can go.
Appreciate everybody.
With the force of the chief's approval and and all that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. I look forward, gentlemen, to, ladies and gentlemen, to get something settled with James Fork as soon as we can, so we never have to deal with that again. I mean, that's sad for him and anybody else, so maybe one day we'll be able to sit here and just keep going and and know all of it. I don't mean that, I mean, no over. Okay, I think we gotta go backwards to, uh, yes, number eleven, twenty twenty lease agreement with Farmers Bank, R S R C A. You have copies of that, we did, we as in Thomas, basically, myself and and some, we took out, Tommy probably better, because we took out some language that we felt like talking to standard, that didn't pertain to like the need to be in there or what what was going on before then, and then we went ahead and put a date on there, I think, does yours have a date on it, for three years? No? Okay, mine has February one, twenty twenty to January thirty first, twenty twenty three, I did, we did that here, because I think, if I if I recollection serves me correctly, memory serves me correctly, that you you guys were, the council was okay with a three year, uh, lease on this, does that sound right? So I don't necessarily, I mean, I would like if you can approve this tonight, I don't have anybody, it's Farmers, not, we sent a copy over to the bank, they're not here, right, Daniel? Didn't hear anything back, assuming, I mean, I think this is good with them, yes, sir?
Our, a lot of our aims in our term is previously was item number three.
Okay.
And the vagueness of what we had before, the all encompassing nature of what we had before.
Right.
You know, I did this.
We changed that.
Feels a little softer, but, you know, routine maintenance needed to keep property in good condition, pay all property taxes. And the policy, it was a million, wasn't it?
And they dropped it to five hundred?
Right, we, that whole reverse.
You know, what is routine maintenance?
Well, that's that's up for, that's up for us to work with them, and gave us a foot in the door in case we had to replace the entire roof, you know, due to structural damage or something.
So we talked, we sort of talked at one point, you know, could we cap this to something, you know, put some.
On the maintenance?
Dollar. Maybe annual cap of, you know, whatever I call it.
Add another fifteen thousand plus where our maintenance bill was over.
Right, and you could do that in battle with them and then just still go with a month to month, but you're looking only at three years because you're looking to acquire a building that is away from this lease right now. Initially, you said, let's just do a year, they came back with three years, but we think three years is about what it's gonna take for us to look for an alternative location. This is a stopgap, that's all it is, and it does provide us the opportunity to go to Farmers on anything that's major structural. Remember, when we first talked to you, they said, if you walk from this building, we're tearing it down. So they don't care about major structural damage to that property, they just want you to be able to use it for what your contract with S R C A says. And so what what we're really doing is we're capping S R C A, we're saying that maintenance on them, we're saying, we're gonna, we're gonna cap their expenses, I think it's written into the contract that they signed, uh, to a certain dollar amount, and then they have to come to you for anything over that. So it holds them accountable for damage and stuff they do inside their building. Plus, we provide a lot of the maintenance from our people here, so it cuts our costs down as well. So we're only looking at this to be a three year stopgap so that we can look for an alternative place that we don't have to be leasing from Farmers for a dollar a year. That's that's the whole reason for this, but the problem is, legislative audit, we don't have a contract, we don't have a lease on that building, it's, that's a, you're in dangerous territory right now. But they are.
On, Tom, is it telling us, though, that we can, that we will go back to them to to negotiate for life, for better term?
Negotiate.
Of on one maintenance or major?
What it does, it it makes us, it makes us have to go back to define routine. That's what it does.
I mean, if it hits the building and blows all the air conditioning units up.
Well, now, you gotta remember, anything that's insurable, we're covering under our insurance policy, so that's.
That's getting technical.
Plus, we have a, we have a.
I mean, you know what I'm saying? If 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 something happens that costs fifteen thousand dollars to fix.
It's not really a routine.
That's.
Routine's changing all the time.
Who gets to define routine?
By the way, your other contract that is with, um, this is with the bank.
Right.
The other one with that, with S R C A defines more, uh, we gotta, and I'm I'm winging it there, we gotta keep them going. And we have a cap on maintenance and that lady back there keeps up with that, every every invoice, every P O, and we get to to cap, I think, we're very near, for instance, utilities over there, they're gonna, they're gonna overspend, if you will, what we have.
Like a monthly cap?
Sorry?
Like a monthly cap.
Annual cap.
It's an annual, twelve thousand dollar annually, and and I think they're right.
We put that in there.
That's the other, so.
We were, we were giving, you know, not only what we were giving them, just monetarily wise for certain meals, but we were also providing expense as far as.
Yeah, this contract before said that we're gonna pay all their operating costs, but that's not for them to say, that's the contract that we have with S R C A, so we pulled it out of here and put it into S R C A's contract to hold them accountable, otherwise, they don't care if they leave the lights on twenty four hours a day. We need to help them manage their building and their costs.
And they and they, sorry, they assume will, because for instance, and we looked very specifically just recently, because I kept thinking, where are we on, and I went to Shannon, she pulled it up and talked to Daniel, and the month, now they, and I'm not, this is their business, obviously, but we're we're paying their utility bills in the month of August, they've not had anybody, uh, they've not had, I keep calling them residents, but people, they still put meals and deliver meals out of there, but they've not had the the people in the building. So their air, their utility bill, I don't know what happened, unless something went haywire over there, but they had almost a double month of utilities and there was nobody there other than their office people in their kitchens. So they're gonna know, and I'm not threatening, doing that as a threat, it's just gonna be probably important for them here in October, we're not paying their utilities, so it's on them.
Well, I guess what, you know, what I'm curious about is, you know, is maintaining the flower beds to look nice and pretty and have all our plants and mulch in them, is that routine maintenance, or is that something that'd be nice to have? You know, we don't wanna, yeah, we'd like for you to have that, but that's not part of the deal.
And we don't do that, you know, we we occasionally, I say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let them speak, I think occasionally we have gone over there and transcribed edges.
We transcribed so they could see outside.
Yeah, but we don't, because in in, you know, if you drive by there tomorrow, if it was on us and if we were responsible, if we had the money to do it, I'd I'd like for that thing to look nice, and and really.
I just don't wanna buy new windows and roofs and everything.
No, we, no, we replaced units before over there, because that is, in that, that's part of it.
And and we just had storm damage.
Sorry?
We just had that storm damage.
Yeah, there's, right now, as we speak, there's storm damage over there, the the insurance is not gonna, if we got a ten thousand dollar.
Ten thousand dollars. It was only seven. The cost was only seventy five hundred.
Yeah, we're looking at a, what was the bill? What am I right on?
I thought it was seventy, seventeen hundred.
Seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen hundred dollars.
And it's a ten thousand, I bet after all. You don't get a seven hundred.
So they're leaking.
I was thinking, only seventy five hundred.
Seventeen hundred.
Yeah. The building lease, as we're speaking, I mean, one rating, only one rating.
So what was the the date, is it from January of this year?
We hit it by three years, as as the bank is requesting or has requested, it would've been February, is this right, February one, that's what we did.
February one.
Yeah, February one, twenty twenty to January thirty first, twenty twenty three.
That's when, that picks up where the last one expired this year and goes for three years. Now, on item number eight, you have a ninety day written notice back out of this, uh, lease, and by putting that in there, if we get a building next, first quarter of next year, we can say, hey, we're gone, ninety days for us. So you're not locked into this, you have an app.
And what's worth, I mean, I I think it's worth saying, at least for their sake, it's a dollar a year, I mean, we are, even though we're maintaining this facility. We're not paying.
We're in arrears, we're not paying.
We, I mean, by the way, we owe them now for many dollars, yeah.
But we have not heard from the bank.
Not yet.
No, I I think it probably goes, it's just on Sam's desk and it's not, and it's had signatures what's required, and I'll call them tomorrow and. So either, I I mean, if you're okay with it, I mean, I'm not trying to. They won't see.
Doctor resolution?
Second.
That motion's second to die.
Ms. Taryn?
Yes.
My pal.
Yes.
And Taryn?
Yes.
Dan, Daniel?
Yes.
Dee Brown?
Yes.
Top Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, again, I, I did twelve, number thirteen is a resolution, and it, this, anyway, a resolution amending by different persons property for solar power protection. And the reason we provided. And the reason we provided, you have been driving this resolution, if you want to report that this idea of solar, the city, all we just, the building, my city agreed with. Uh, there were two options, or an option was for the power company or the scenic solar to purchase this property that is needed for our plant. We don't own any property that, that is for that.
I can give you this.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
There are three, actually.
That's true.
Okay. The first is scenic hills would purchase the land, and they would go and negotiate with, let's, whoever the seller is, we all know who that is, but the land would be, cost would be passed through to us. So that would eat into, because originally they'd said, city, you provide the land, and then there's no cost to you. We'll go out and we'll put in the, of the arrays, but if they have to buy the land, they're passing that cost through us, and that's gonna eat into what they had calculated as our savings. They're not gonna eat that, because initially they're gonna, we have the ability to buy it back, so that's the other. If at the end of the six, at the end of the fifth year, we'd have to buy that land back from them if we were gonna buy the whole operation. So it's best for us to, from cost of capital perspective, for us to negotiate for this little land as a property tax free, uh, to then lease that land back to scenic hills. But if Greenwood were to provide the land right now, we would have to be looking at our own property currently exists without purchasing, and that would be two parcels, because you have to put the land in the footprint of both of our utility companies. And by the two parcels, it would be put onto property that could be used for future expansion of those utility services that we have, the water sewer plants. The future growth would be that we would have to, then, if they needed to expand, we'd have to be looking at purchasing land or expanding somewhere else, so you'd be buying land later anyway, at whatever the cost of that land, which would be developable land, is that what you say? Land that could be developed. The land that we're looking at right now, which is on that map that you have there, is one parcel of land for ten acres, but it sits in the footprint of both of the, uh, utility company entities' footprints. So we would be looking at ten acres of land that is not prime, not practical to develop for any residential or commercial development because of where it's located and most likely a pasture flood plain. And there, the, the array company, the solar company is good with that because they'll build that up, that's not a problem for them. And by them leasing it back, if we lease it to them, they have the power to operate that and control the maintenance and upkeep of that property because that would be stipulated in the lease for them to do that. We've already had discussions with them about that. They say that it's the best option to do. Again, the city would own the property, we would lease it back to them, but the long term advantage is that if we were to, in year five, acquire, decide that beginning of year six, we want to purchase the power source of the power company or the arrays at a cost of purchasing that asset, it's a lease that we just take back. We own that property, we don't have that cost of that property anymore. So we're buying now for a future, for a potential future advantage. So the three things would be, we use our land, we use the land that we purchase, or we let scenic hills negotiate the purchase of that land, which would come at the cost that we would be able to afford. Because I'm sure if they're dealing with a poor profit entity, they would be asking a lot more for that land than what they're giving it to us for.
And the land is thirty thousand dollars?
Four thousand an acre.
Plus?
Plus closing costs, which we don't know exactly, but the closing cost.
You said, I know who this is, who is, who runs, oh, farmers, okay.
You could go down our new road and get to it.
Go down to our new.
Do a little more road.
Took that off my phone, had that crazy road, goes back to me.
Think I have swamp land.
That's where he housed them.
Oh, that's not swamp land.
No.
This is pasture, it's pasture. But it's where it's located, once.
Scenic build, sewerly build, if you want to.
Right, exactly. Nobody's gonna build a sewer in there, because you're gonna look at the sewer. But it's not, I mean, we were just out there, it's absolutely not.
That's not lowland?
Yes, sir.
That's not farmer land right now.
That is the beginning of the rise, right behind our fence, that sewer plant is basically really leveled, and then right when this, where this begins, it really, it's the same. And, and then where the road, you see that, that road, that corner edge, that goes all the way up to the, sewer, I mean, water treatment plant, I guess, is formerly four each property, obviously. But only, only that road starts a very slight incline over the hill, so it's, it's sloped, if it's sloped at all, it's sloped towards sewer land, but no, it's not.
Towards the creek.
Yeah, and no, it's not wet at all.
How big is that?
Ten.
Each inch.
Right. Five, like you said, five sets in a bag, or is it about five sets or six?
Four hundred thousand, can you get a truck or seven anywhere they get?
No.
They don't sell that.
They don't sell that.
Oh, it was.
But we don't have an agreement at this point with the solar company, correct?
What I signed was a, a letter of intent to begin the process of what we've been doing.
That, that big contract that Charlotte shared is my opinion.
Yeah, we have that.
That's something, that contract hasn't been done, right?
Yes.
It has been done, yes.
And this thing will go to all city businesses?
Yeah, Phil Park, this one, any, any building, municipal building that we have. And then, Tom, can you give the old information too? The initial, or I, I guess roughly saying sixty thousand dollars first year, thirty years, say it's a two point two million dollars. That's what I'm, I'm agreeing.
And, and then do we have to enter some type of agreement with SWEPCO and with, you know, as far as?
And they've already been, they've already been contacted by scenic solar to give, I don't know what that was called, what they did, to find out the, what's the, what's the word, but, I don't know, but we, no, we don't. I had a meeting with SWEPCO, representative from SWEPCO early on, back when I first brought the idea all to you.
Energy service, I think.
Thank you. So that's on that, that's on scenic solar. I did have a meeting with political representative, I was from SWEPCO, and as you can imagine, Sonny was in there, you were in there, they're not, they're not excited, I mean, they, they are starting their own solar, I don't know, SWEPCO or Saw Valley, for sure. They're not really excited about doing anything that doesn't give them as much money as they were gonna get, but it's, and by the way, the owner of this company, if it matters, we've not said before, is former lieutenant governor, Bill Halter. He and Nick.
Last year's.
Passera's sister or something like that, is who, who we've had our discussions with.
Bill Halter was the one, give us the.
No, Audrey's partnership.
Oh, yeah, I think that's right.
My kids have benefited.
Mine did.
Just so you know.
I, I introduced him as a term, former generator, not too long ago.
This is a net metered project where they sell the electricity, they basically send the electricity to the electric company, electric company then gives it to us and meters what they get, and then when there's times when they have to send us electricity and it's not where we're producing it, they subtract that credit, basically is how it works. But the problem that the electric companies have is, it's the grid that it's going over. There, it's, it's passing through the, the electric company's grid at no recoverable cost to them, because they're getting free energy to them and they're just passing it over to us, and they still have to maintain that grid. So in front of the Public Service Commission right now is a proposal that possibly will come into being very shortly, is a grid fee. And we talked about, they will pass that on to the, to the customer, we're the customer. So we talked to the solar company and they said, yeah, the grid fee would be on you. So that would cut in to that three point two million. There's all these little things that potentially could impact how much savings we actually get, but it does, it does eliminate or reduce significantly our, our footprint, it's the good thing to do, it's the green thing to do, and there will be savings, but how much savings is yet to be determined. Now, I can tell you right now, if we own that asset, then you have to figure out how long it's gonna take for you to get the return on that investment that you make. If it's gonna be five years, ten years, depending on how much money we have to lay out and, and pay off in our interest and debt to acquire it, you will see, you will see significant savings because you're not paying them for their costs of their capital, that's yours. So the savings comes if you own it. And if we owned it outright, we had the capital right now to buy it, that's the best way to go, but we're trying to do this to save a million and a half, maybe, two million dollars over thirty years, and, um, at least reduce our, right now, our energy bills by a year annually. It's, it's a, it's a no brainer to do. And like I said, if power companies didn't think it was a good idea, they wouldn't be investing solar on their own right now to generate cleaner energy.
Might motion with doctor resolution to, to property, solar power production center.
Have a motion to second to doctor resolution.
Liz, Harry?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Liz, Harry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Topficker?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. I think this is not something that's gonna be huge for City of Greenwood, one, it's gonna get us on, 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 uh, it's gonna get us on TV. But it's, but it's the right thing to do, and it's, it's, there was, I'm not gonna settle you anymore, thank you, appreciate it.
Little papers here.
Oh, hello, paper. By the way, Drew Smith from Times, thank you for being here. I forget to do that sometimes, thank you. Fourteen, uh, bond update, or a traffic relief bond update, let me go back to Mr. Marshall there.
Okay. A lot of people have this opinion that we're doing nothing, but there is a lot of movement in the traffic relief project. One of the things that slowed us down was the fact that COVID hit, and our, our, the ARDA saw decreased revenues due to their collections of their fuel purchases, and they slowed down a lot of their projects, and it was probably a good thing because the market that we were going and investing in was the bond market, and the bond market took a hit from the skittish investors over the fact that we're collateralizing with city sales and use tax. And they didn't know what was gonna happen with the city sales and use tax. So it pretty much dropped the investors' interest in bonds, so we had to wait for the bond market to rebound. We have been in constant communication in our dealings and talking with Raymond James. They have, the first thing that we did is, when the timing was right, we felt like we could get our five million dollar contribution to the actual project, which is what we need for ARDA, yet still pay off the existing police bond, do the refunding of that bond. We're looking at a six point seven million dollar sales and use tax refunding and improve that bond. The timing seemed to be right that we should go after the, more aggressively now and try to issue the bond. The first thing that we had to do was identify a trustee for the bond. We elected to have Regions Bank be the trustee, they came in. When you looked at the two that were in the, all party, we had a very low bid, which was a proposal that was way outside the boundaries of reasonable, and then when we talked with people that had used them in the past, there wasn't a very high favorable communication to us about their serviceability of that, of them being the trustee. And we needed to have good flow there and good, uh, reasonable contact with them. So then we had, throughout the high bid too, because it was well outside of the range. The two that fell in there was Simmons Bank and Regions. Neither one of them at present have a building in, in and around Greenwood, so it didn't, that wasn't a factor. What we did is we looked at who had the lowest in that category, Simmons was higher than Regions, so we went with Regions, and we've elected them. So they have already been notified that they will be the, um, bond trustee. We are already using Regions, by the way, for our, um, four fifty seven B investment strategy. Then we had a call with S and P, we had a ratings call where we had to supply enormous amounts of data about the city. Some of the questions that were asked, that we had to provide them, involved how the fund, the project is being funded, we had to discuss the tax collection trends, specifically they were looking at, uh, expectations for moving forward of the tax, how the COVID impacted the sales tax for the City of Greenwood, realizing that our area is experiencing a little bit of an anomaly compared to the nation. Investors for this bond, uh, and the ratings people look at it from all over the United States, they just don't look at the north, the western part of Arkansas. So we were, unfortunately, we were being compared to what was happening nationwide. They basically wanted us to discuss new money debt plans over the next two to three years, so we had to talk about again why it's very important for you guys to give me a three to five year, uh, capital plan, because it factors into things like these when we're having to convince them that we're a good risk for this investment. We had to disclose all of our current lending that we have, they wanted to know about our economy, they specifically wanted to know the local economy, we had to provide information on new and ongoing developments, including any commercial, industrial, or residential developments that have a significant impact on your tax, employment, and your revenue base. That's why growing the city is very important, because they, they're looking at a forty year investment, and they wanted to know what's gonna happen in forty years for the City of Greenwood, are you gonna go up or down? Because they want that tax revenue to be consistent for them in order to be able that we're gonna make our bond, uh, debt service. One of the other things that they did ask was what was going on over the last three years as far as our general, uh, fund performance. The good news is that we did show them that we have, we had approximately a thirty four percent, uh, growth in general fund over the last three years from two thousand sixteen to eighteen, and, um, then they wanted to know about management, which was huge, they wanted to understand our revenue and, uh, budget procedure and our revenue and expenditure assumptions that go into our budgets. They wanted to know about, um, how COVID was built into our budget and how we reacted to that, or budgetary adjustments that were made as a result. Then they asked for, um, budget amendments and how you guys approved budget amendments, if any, to the city's budgets, long term financing plan, uh, do you have a formal or informal multi-year financial plan? We talked to them about that, the long term capital plan, do we have one, and how, how does it exist for more than five years? Investment management policy, uh, formalized strategies, do you have debt management policies, reserve and liquidity policies? And then last but not least, they wanted to know about our cybersecurity to protect our infrastructure data. So all of that was given to them, it took a long time to formalize that and give it to them, and we had a conference call with them, and now we're waiting for them to come back with the formal rating for our bonds. They did talk about the coverage ratio right now, which is sitting at potentially one point one five. We did our first pro forma on the bond at one point two coverage ratio, so it's gonna be close as to whether we, um, have an issue with being able to generate about five million dollars for the project. The good news is that while our city sales and use tax has gone enormously high over this year, we have been putting more money away to pay down the refund of the bond for the police, and we're looking, we were looking at having to pay a little over two million, it's right now one point nine million, so that has significantly dropped, so anything that we don't have to put into the refunding of that bond comes back to this project. So they are very positive with the fact that a one point one five to one point two coverage is gonna be adequate for us. So we took their advice, and, um, we have some timelines that we're looking at, which is why she mentioned a potential, Charlotte mentioned a potential special call meeting. So the timeline works this way, Wednesday of this week, we're expecting that we're gonna be getting a, a ratings letter, a formalized ratings letter on what our bond rating would be. We've had some preliminary discussions, but until we get it in writing and it becomes public, we don't know what that bond rating formally is. On Tuesday, the twenty second of September, they're gonna, potentially they're looking at that date to offer the bonds. They'll review the offering details with the city, with us on the twenty eighth. On Tuesday, the twenty ninth, they're asking for a special city council meeting to adopt authorizing the bond ordinance and execute the bond purchase. the bond ordinance and execute the bond purchase agreement. So, that will need to put on your calendars. It looks like right now that is the target date for us to have a meeting to quickly do that. And now, Tuesday, the 29th also, they will do a final official statement available for distribution. That's when it would be, everything will be disclosed and made public. That's their timeline for this. And then they expect or anticipate the bond to be closed October 29th.
When did you sign this special meeting?
Tuesday, the 29th of September. That's their tentative timeline right now. It is subject to change, but they've been pretty, pretty on target so far.
Can we go ahead and schedule that? Is everybody familiar with their calendar? Or Tuesday, the 29th, 5:00 or 6:00 p.m. or whatever you want to do? It's a very important matter, because that bond is going to probably come down here. So, let's please have a forum.
We'll do it at 6:00?
Sure. 6:00 is good? 6:00 good with everyone?
Yes. Charles is it?
No, that's, that's for study sake. So, I'm going to put down our calendars now. Okay, everyone's getting to put down their calendars?
29th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
I'll say it one more time. It isn't good to know that the board is out of hand when it comes to finance.
Lady.
Drew's still out?
Yeah, I'm still.
What does it take, five years to prove you're not?
I know.
It's the five years after you leave approval.
Yeah. They put a lot of time and effort into this, obviously. Charlotte also, and I sat in a phone conference trying to tell bad jokes. So, I will see. Appreciate all the work. Number 15, auction list. We need, I have been, we brought to my attention that we need to get rid of some stuff. And so, you have lists here from the water, I'm sorry, security department, water, and the street department.
It doesn't say straight at the top, but this one is straight.
Yeah.
It doesn't say anywhere on there that it is straight, but they write it if you want to go in your coffee. Also, there's something to add to this street one, and it's a 1996 GMC Topkick dump truck.
But it's actually one that the Parks Department.
Parks.
That's yours?
Parks truck.
Is all the rest of this stuff street?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's a Parks vehicle, what I just said. Don't want me saying it again.
So, wait a minute, we just bought a dump truck in your zone? Little bit, little bit different.
A little different.
Yes, it is. So, we want, we wanted, I know, obviously, the council needs to look at this, check this list and get some approval. You guys on? These are assets.
Looking at charity membership before the auction?
I don't think that works though. Sorry.
It's sorted boxes of socks together.
Wait a minute, there's a solar panel cover. Where do I do that?
Just cover.
Just cover.
I'm making a motion to approve the auction list.
Okay. Motion to second to approve. Third.
Second.
What, Mr. Brown said?
He did?
Okay.
Mr. Terry is the third.
Dexter?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Edes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And?
I believe, word number 16, lawsuit.
About a week ago, I guess, Mayor and Sonny, on behalf of the city, were sued by Thomas Dick, saying that we were selectively picking on him, basically, after property. And we sued just because he said that we're not taking care of our property across the street.
That's, I want to understand the way we're in this.
Yeah. And anyway, I contacted the district board, I proposed it, and I left two messages. We got no return phone calls. So, we have 30 days to respond. The district board generally charged, I think, I think they went $4,000. Just, I don't know, it depends. I don't know whether this is going to be covered or not. So, I will probably just have to give you an update at the special call meeting. I don't know anything more than that. The part, when I think of the lawsuit, I think it's silly, I think it gets dismissed.
What's he asking for in this lawsuit?
Right. He, you know, this, where he lives currently.
I, I don't know, put something out where he lives.
You know, everybody knows where Mr. McConnell lives.
Yeah, Mr. Gary Maynes owns that.
Everybody knows. And we believe the piece of property that he is referring to, that we are not keeping ourselves and therefore telling him to take care of his, is the little strip of woods that's between Miss McConnell's property and who lived, uh...
Jordan Oliver's little house.
Who?
Jordan Oliver's little house.
Yeah. There's a, and what that strip of wood, wood is...
Jump ball.
Jump ball. That little strip of woods under this, bigger than that, is where the road would have come up out of the Oak subdivision to turn to it name. We, Sonny pulled it up on county records. We obviously do not own that piece of property, but it was platted at one time, I suppose, if that's the right word to use for that road. It has that name that I wrote on it, but it also says no information. I mean, we, to my knowledge, we do not own that as a city. And if we did, it's, it's woods. It's not someone's yard or, or anything. So, that's, I'm assuming that's what it's, because directly across the road from him is Miss McConnell's property, which everybody knows, that's where he slowly had to see the deer down in the pond by, by, by McConnell.
So, we've approached him about what, cleaning up his property?
Last year, I sent him a, a letter because he had mowed his lawn, but he's got those crepe burrows along there, and he wouldn't mow in between them, and grass got up like that. So, I sent him a letter, said, you know, you need to mow that, you're responsible for the yard all the way to the street. Well, he gets his attorney to send us a letter saying that I'm to cease and desist of sending him any more letters. Well, he mowed his lawn, and so I didn't have any need to send him any more letters until this year, the same thing happened. I sent him another letter, said, you need to mow this part of the property. Well, then, we get this lawsuit, and I guess I'm going to jail. I don't know.
Is this the fence, some of the fence, some of the fence?
Yes.
Yes.
But you look, if you look at the crepe burrows, they're brilliant, and right away, if you're, he's...
He'll be out one day. Six days. He, he has threatened lawsuits with just about everybody in town, and probably go ahead and get one or two of them.
And in the suit referencing me, he called, he says he contacted me, which he did, and I, it literally says that I argued with him and told him that Sonny was doing his job, which is exactly what I told him, minus the fact that I was cussed out on the other end of the phone, that's over there. So, that's the lawsuit.
So, what, so he's seeking an assault suit? We don't...
It really just kind of says, I think, in my, yeah, it doesn't say I'm wanting this, it just says to do what we're supposed to do and keep up with our own property.
Says I'm harassing.
That's a loose...
Yeah, that's kind of what it says. It's very loose. Like I said, I think the town is...
See you in court.
Third.
See you in court.
I'd like to counter sue.
Okay. Same guy, same guy.
Probably another one coming, because I was, I was, I don't know what she said, but he threatened me with another one. Everybody knows where our big sign is, or our Greenwood sign, out there, the Michael Design Force. When we built that, we didn't have any power, so I called the power company to get power to it. I heard that power companies do that. And they said, okay, we will. I got a call from the same gentleman a few weeks later, saying that I was, he was going to sue me because the power company had come out and put a bolt on his property to get power to that sign, which is by the parking lot. And I just, I said, I informed him, in my opinion, that it was his, his beat, which was the power company, not me. I didn't put a bolt there. And so, that makes it weak.
Where does he have property associated to that?
He, he did, he actually sold it to Jacob Burton, but he had a very small slice right beside what I call the Great Wall of Tractor Supply. And what we now maintain, which is the highway department, parking lot, there's a, you know, if you go out there and see where we do a great job mowing, or the street department does, there's always this little slice that's not mowed, because it's not our responsibility. And that, that's what he owned, but he...
He tried to sue the tractor supply. He said the wall was over two foot on his property, and they surveyed it, and he was wrong.
Can he own the pizza bar?
He owns the pizza bar, he goes, that's why there's a parking lot there, that's a whole other...
Baptist church.
Yeah.
He's the one that did all the parking lot over there by the, oh, yeah.
But we thought you told us that. Actually, it's, I guess, the city was...
Running the Flatsong Village, any of you. That's the law to you.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to go quickly back to the bond and give them one more...
Okay, sure.
I forgot to mention to you that initially, this is a 40-year bond. I didn't want to leave it at that, because people think, oh, God, you didn't, you said it would possibly be paid off early. Well, given its current structure, it is a 40-year bond instead of a 35-year bond. That's the only way we could do it, getting our $5 million for the project. However, assuming no growth, that means we're flat at our 3.5% as we go every year, no growth, we just continue with what, what we have right now, collecting for the next, how many ever years, the bond would pay off in 2047, which is 27 years instead of 40. So, staying exactly where we are, not getting any dollar more, it's still going to pay off way earlier than 40 years, based on the current city sales and tax collections. And that was presented at S&amp;P.
With that, I would move to, thank Tom, I would move to the department reports and questions from council. I think we've got a couple of others, four, maybe four departments remaining.
Sir Stewart, we didn't get a fire report. Did we? You win. I've been informed that in three minutes, Charlotte wins the lottery. We've been here tonight, so...
I said 10:00.
So, eight and three, back to the service. And that's the one that was...
Yes.
46 minutes, I saw. This looks back together, we...
She's got so much stuff.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was asking about the fire. I'll read it to you. Eight and three is back to the service, and I was just asking if it was just backed back together.
Drive down the road a little quicker.
Steer in the back like a big...
Exactly.
There you go. Not supposed to, but that's where they put the...
I was saying, I was approached by, because of the law of the house, the property, you know, the very thing, and immediately they did it, you know. I think we, we get a chance to know the lawsuit in the central.
I'll get in touch with them. They're, they're good about that.
Yeah, I notice it's pretty...
Are they going to... Start.
Daniel, they're, they're waiting for business to go, you know, because they lost 80% of their business overnight. You know, they, they...
Their files are poured on the...
A few, few businesses, and I'm like Sonic or something like that, they could go to carry out, so there's a lot better out there than they...
That's why I told them, say, well, you know, tow this stuff, the building, really.
The tow is the least...
They, you know, they've given us a...
Wow. That is, that is...
Hey, see, they've given us a company that they've moved out. Stress that. Police.
Anybody else from the department heads?
I feel they're tonight opening.
You what?
I'm afraid they're tonight, because opening Greenwood.
I didn't do it.
I would go there tonight.
Oh, well, we actually talked about that today, about how long this meeting could last, and we said, well, it's probably a road trip to Waffle House. I said, we probably could go to the one war building.
I'm reading the parts still, and I'm seeing about lighting on the trail up we can see Hall of Farmers Bank.
We, we are getting lights at the basketball court, and so hopefully, that will be delivered tomorrow, and then I will have Elliot Electric and Brian, Edwin, go out and look at our, our trail from City Hall to Farmers Bank.
I have a number of jumpers hitting up about that.
Yeah, I have too.
The lighting.
Yes.
I was going to ask.
Elliot Electric thinks he may, he, he, he said, I don't want to say too much, but he may have somebody that actually has some decorative poles stored that they could not use, that, he said, I don't want to tell you until I find out what a good price is, but they might sell them to us for, just the poles for a good price. So, anyway, they're kind of looking around and kind of getting some ideas. So, hopefully, when I come back, the next time, you'll know a price on at least that bar.
Would the decorative poles be able to be duplicated, you know, if we extend the lighting?
Well, we had talked about decorative poles from, from, from the bridge out behind City Hall to behind Farmers Bank, to kind of, that's kind of the historical district thing. And then I was hoping just to have lesser expensive poles from there on to Denver and past there.
That's a certain cell tower company besides the help out.
I was, I really wanted to ask, you can get in, take a picture, some money for that, for our lighting on our trip. But, anyway, I will be asking.
You just put a box over it and hit that.
Right, absolutely.
And Tim, you had asked me, I think last month, about some lights out, parade light or some lighting out there on the sidewalk on Mount Harley. I had, I met with representatives, two, two guys from Monkeesaw Valley. I figured they liked, I told them what I wanted or what the interest was, so they marked three poles out of all of those and said, here, this one really did a good job. And we got a quote back from them, so we do it.
I appreciate it. My, my, it's, it's obvious enough for me, I don't walk, I'm a sidewalk very much. Really, my job.
But, and so, anybody, in case, for future references, anytime we ask to do anything like that, the power company now charges, it's a thousand-dollar pole, because you have to pay for the, what's it called?
Transplant.
Well, that is a lot, the transplant, same thing. Yeah, thank you.
Do we ever sell that street?
I'm still trying to get those guys to give me a quote. Later on, if they had not, you may, is supposed to be giving me a quote on that sidewalk. I didn't go either, I did tell him either side, I just said, go look at that street. I think he understood. I don't think I did. No, I haven't done it yet.
What about our sidewalk on Center Street?
Why'd you ask? It's been canceled in July. We are getting easements in ever so slowly. I thought, they look good there for a while, we were getting probably a couple every other day, but the process is getting the easements back. Sonny has contacted Ann or Daniel, if not both, every, I think there's 35 easements that we have to get for, for, you know, going for where we're going.
Total or still?
No, total, total. And we got...
I got a return letter today from O'Reilly, so I got to find out, you know, who, who can sign an easement for O'Reilly. I sent it to the corporate office, and it just came back non-adorable or something.
So, there's, some of them are a little hard, some of them are out of state, some of them are just not...
Some places though, like O'Reilly's, I mean, there's not much parking on the sidewalk there, right?
Yeah. How many easements do we lack, John?
Several.
Probably 15.
Oh, 15 or so.
Are easements the holdup on the whole project?
Well, the easements have to be obtained and then turned into RDOT, and then RDOT puts it through there. We, believe me, I'm staying in touch with Jeremy, and we went ahead and called RDOT themselves too, not to, I don't trust him, but it was like, we cannot miss a deadline here. And they tell me there is no deadline on it, on, just soon, we, soon as we get them, we hand them in to RDOT, and then they run them through their easement.
And the engineering's already been done, and it's ready to go out for vehicles?
That's correct.
The church there by our view is, is one hangout, they don't know whether they have one sidewalk coming.
Yeah, we actually got the, or he did.
So, we can have portions that are skipped, still go out?
So far, that's the only one that has walked a little bit.
And they hadn't said, no, they would have, they would have been able to stop like three.
But they say, they, they have a little, they have a sidewalk right at next to their building, you probably don't notice it much, but it just goes from door to door. So, I think the comment was, why would we want, why not? Well, it's not for the people at the church, obviously, it's for pedestrians, so hopefully So hopefully they will reconsider. Nobody else has blinked an eye so far with us. If, if, if we made some, had some contact. And we, uh, we've already reapplied, I think, every dentist on, on the phase two again, or I can't remember now. We got turned down. I think our, I did report to back a while, but we got turned down to three. I'm sorry, phase two. But anyway, that's, we'll, we'll keep reapplying for that.
Where is phase two?
Phase two picks up where we stop on the north side of the highway on Tinsburg. Is it Gold, uh? Well, we refer to. Golden Years.
Is phase two not from Denver to C V's or is that phase three?
No, maybe I'm.
Phase two went to Health Depot. No, we're, that's.
That's one. One goes from Denver to, all the way to Golden Years on that side of the road and then from Vancouver South to Tractor, uh.
Waffle House.
Waffle House. That's all phase one on the other side. I can't remember now. Maybe two picks up.
Maybe it comes back this way.
Maybe it does. Maybe on the opposite, maybe on Webster back to Tractor.
No, I think it starts at Denver and goes to C V's then.
Right.
Well, I had to look, I had to look back. Whatever it is, it's already in the work. It's already engineered too.
Yeah, we were turned down one because it was reapplying. So if we did an easement or we failed, we did two easements. We can go ahead and start?
Yeah, we just skip them.
Just skip.
That's mine.
I think you just probably go ahead and, and put sidewalks here. And that's basically in the, uh, state right away.
As soon as, one day we'll be able to, because it won't be the state right away. Yeah.
But.
Did you just grow?
We're asking for a lot as a construction.
I know. I, that, that's a good question. I mean, easements doesn't say right away, we've got permission from the highway to do it. I'm not sure why we have to do, go through the process, but that's something.
I think it's for the construction needs, but at the beginning, out of there, easements to construct for the sidewalk, but I'm not sure. And there's no deadline.
I've been assured by both parties that we're okay. As soon as you get them terminated, then we'll put them through the process.
How would we have been paying engineering costs?
How?
How?
Oh, how?
Yeah, or have we?
Yes.
Yeah, we have some investment funds that are budgeted for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was budgeted with the street department.
So what did you think he asked? How much?
How much?
It's like we're being nickel and dime, engineer, engineer, engineer.
Low down.
Where did it stop?
Nice.
You just keep.
Well, we talked to them. It's right on what he had.
Yeah, it is. We, we, we thought it.
We thought it was way high, but it's.
And, and they put after bid.
Yeah.
They're just waiting on our easements.
Yeah.
Just, which we were doing.
Yeah, we are doing.
Just. Daniel's been real.
I mean, Jeremy supplied the easements for us. And then we're, we're literally going out, handover, calling and doing whatever you can door to door. I mean, I, for instance, Dr. Singer, no brainer, we go down.
Right.
He signs it. He signs it to Gager. You gotta track down Mrs. Gager now, who's typically a name here, but.
She was gonna be in Greenwood, but then didn't show up and it's just.
Farmer's Bank has signed off there too, which is a house that everybody loves with a truck that's not for sale. By the way, don't ask, it's a hundred thousand dollar. For me, whatever.
Farmer's Bank don't have?
I'm sorry, that's incorrect. That would be Samuel and Brian Bush.
Our debt.
Our debt. Uh, speaking of that, wow.
Sorry.
Think of that house. They got a bunch of junk out in New York.
He comes and goes.
Something like that.
We're gonna, we're gonna get sued over that too, probably.
Well, we want. The crepe burrows, you get drained with that house out there, right?
No, it's, they, they receive, they receive letters too, but sometimes you, and I agree with you, don't get me wrong. That truck, if it's running, is not illegal, even though it doesn't look appealing. Lawn mower that's there sometimes, but when, when junk starts filing that, it's a little different.
Four wheeler that's been sitting there for months.
It's, yeah, that'll end a little somewhere. It's, it's junk, but it's not illegal then.
Unfortunately, it is where it is.
Well, I thought we weren't gonna rent it anymore because of the market.
Well, I was, I was just around, I was around.
I don't know about that.
It went to business for a while and somehow it got back to a real property. I'm not sure how that fell through.
But they're, you know, but that's how the easements go, like. You know, if they're local, we can grab them. We grab them. Some of them are out of state.
I've got, building roads, you got hers. I got to pick it in and up. We have a little more than half right now.
I can look at a lot of them.
We start building level guy?
No, we don't. I mean, we have, you had Casey's.
Did you get Golden Years yet?
Uh, I have her back from. Yeah, we, this, I won't go into all that. Well, I have, so, uh, council forum, I think that's what you just did. You guys want to consider.
What about our gates in front of our trash receptacle here? And also, is the gate to the street park messed up too, or is that?
It was about street apartment, the, the wind, the night of the storm, got the dumpster gates. We called the people that put it in. He was unavailable for six weeks or something. Some, and then we called another company just to say, come and get it. And it was, I, I, I went over, I brought them, I put it back in there myself because they were laying out and laying down. I think the only thing that's really broken is the hinges. There may be a piece of wood on the fence itself, but they wanted five hundred dollars to.
Almost six. Almost six.
Six hundred, we said, I understand, but I'm like, really? So we just, I don't guess that we, I need to pull that treasure on that old guy, I guess, and let him fix it. I don't know about street apartment, is it broke?
It's kind of old. They dropped power or something.
Off the rail there.
Yeah, I was hoping you could rob of those for Adam.
I have a question from a citizen. It's next weekend, citywide draw up.
It's supposed to be, that's what the chamber had announced previously, but, uh, I believe they're still gonna do it.
They are still.
I believe so. I was wearing, called the very top of the day and I believe they said that they have it.
We do have to do cleanup day, right? Or not?
Tended to it?
Yes.
Sorry?
Tended to it?
Tended to it?
Yes.
Good. We're gonna, county hasn't decided that they're gonna do one yet or haven't contacted us, so we're gonna, I think Dennis found out that Fort Smith has done it. We'll just do it on the same day and kind of get people's attention as far as the citywide cleanup, huh?
Doing the cleanup.
Sorry.
For me to cut the county check, help with the cleanup thing, I guess.
Maybe. There'll be a.
Could a while.
Could be.
Little one had a person still in the. I heard I wanted to apologize to Charlotte and the council, but she got me hooked up on Zoom last month and the closer it got to it, I finally, I just couldn't get it. I just was too sick.
Oh, oh.
You can put that bottle. You know, it's a apology. Couldn't help it.
Well, I called you certain. I told you I'd get.
I thought you were gonna tell she got hooked on or something.
Well, it's understandable. You weren't feeling it.
Glad you didn't get your, your, your counsel.
But thank you.
And we're glad you're better. And on that note, if, if, if I may, I, I just kinda wanna, I, I thank the department set today for cooperating, if you will, with the mask issue. We try very hard and as you all know, no matter what we all believe, it is what it is. So we have, there is this mandate, not strongly, daily, if not weekly. Remind, and I know they get tired hearing about the mask. I'm most appreciative to Stuart, so I like to work in full face. But they've done a really good job, job cooperating and they wear them when they come in typically. And maybe in stuff like this, I'm not having to serve them. We have our department in meetings, just like you're doing right now. But I wanted to say, as, as you know, without, we had a police officer a month ago or two months ago. We came, it was technically COVID, and now we have one other employee. So we've been very fortunate, very fortunate. But remember that family, I want immediate name, obviously. But, uh, so we've been very fortunate with all this, this stuff going on, so. But I appreciate everybody's cooperation. That's all I have. So I would entertain motion to.
Make votes with Darren.
Okay, I didn't know if it was that or if it was, uh, you know, due to that, you know, construction next door, faith. I know there's been a lot of funding. But I'll be, I just had to, I just noticed, I, I turn on it, what comes up, those things, like a moment, and all of a sudden it's, it's stop and it'll, it'll, it'll.